Good evening, everyone. I apologize for the late start. We had a closed session that kind of went overtime. I'd like to call together or call to order the City Council Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency meeting of May 26, 2015. Would you please stand and join us for the pledge, which will be led by Boy Scout Troop 321?
(inaudible) (inaudible)
(inaudible)
Okay, are there any changes to the order of the agenda?
No changes from staff.
This evening, Mr. Mayor. Okay, it has been pointed out to me that new business item. Which one was that, Greg?
We can handle that when the item comes up, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, all right. We will, there will be a change, but we'll go over it. Are there any, is there a report from closed session?
There's no report from closed session, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Before we go to Council Communications and announcements, you will notice that we are down two council members tonight due to various medical events and injuries. They're not with us tonight, but we're wishing both Matt Crocod and Mark Olbert a speedy recovery and hope that they'll be back for the next meetings. Okay, let's start with Bob.
Mr. Mayor, attended the Silicon Valley Clean Water Meeting that was held, I guess, last week, Jay, was last Thursday? And again, discussing the improvements to the sewer plant and sewer conveyance of, or the conveyance, should we say, of the water that we have from San Carlos, Belmont, Redwood City, Menlo Park, and Atherton. It's an ongoing project. We, it basically, a lot of it goes through Redwood City, or a lot, physically is going to end up going a lot through, I think, Redwood City more than our city. But it is a joint powers group that we have. Financially, we're doing well in that, in that group. Budget is on track and proceeding. Is there anything else, Jay, that I should add? I think we've pretty much covered on that. I'm trying to think of what other, what other, if I had, I think that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. I'll come back if I have another one.
Okay. Cameron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended the San Mateo County Hart Board luncheon on a week, a week ago Friday, which the mayor is a board member, attended with a number of staff members. The Hart Board is the Housing Endowment and Regional Trust. What it does is it provides funding for low-income housing projects as well as has a program to help folks finance a down payment. There was a good speaker, talked about the challenges of developing housing in the San Francisco Bay Area and a lot of the just general issues leading to the lack of affordable housing. So there's a lot more to be done there. The, the city participates every year with helping to finance Hart. So that was a good, good event. I participated with the rest of my colleagues in Hometown Days. My daughter had a great time, and my son as well, in the bouncy castles. I had an opportunity to deliver proclamation of thanks to Linda Touche, congratulating her on her 15 years of organizing Hometown Days. I thought she did a great job. The overall committee did a great job. It was a really fun event. I also gave a proclamation to SCEFF, recognizing them for the SCEFF Kids Concert, which kicks off Hometown Days at Burton Park, and all of the money that they raised for the community to help support education, or music education in the schools. Lastly, Mark and I attended a bond committee meeting last week. This is working on the larger project of preparing a bond for the November ballot to purchase the Black Mountain properties and create a new city park. The main activity at that subcommittee meeting was to go over the next community survey, which is going to go out in a couple of weeks. And I think we've got a good, a good survey that's going to get a good reading of the level of support from the public. And I'm very eager to see the results. So that's all I got.
All right, thanks, Cameron. I just have a couple of things. Cameron mentioned the Hometown Days. It was nice to attend that, and I've not, I did not, or have not, had the expertise to judge art projects, so they gladly accommodated me and just had me hand out awards. The next most difficult thing I did was to judge the pet parade, which I learned a new meaning of subjective, but it was a great parade. I didn't, I knew we had a lot of dogs in town. I'm always amazed that they all, that they all show up on to this parade. Also, thanks to Cameron for going to the Hart luncheon. I, I'm the city representative to the Hart Board, and I would have gone, but I got an invitation from Mayor Jim Ruane of San Bruno to attend the first-ever Mayor's Council on Pipeline Safety Conference in Philadelphia. And that, given some of our recent issues with PG&E, seemed like it a little bit more important to attend. And it was very eye-opening. One of the things I learned is that it's not just us. Virtually every state in the country has gas leaks. Every major city, it is a problem in many major cities. Allentown, Pennsylvania, had an explosion about six months after San Bruno's, which killed, destroyed eight houses and killed, killed a few people. And it's, we have some incredibly aging infrastructure. Some of you may know that some of the pipeline that was discovered on our line 147 dated back to 1929. We thought that was old. Apparently, in Rhode Island, I believe, there is, there's some pipeline that dates back to when Abraham Lincoln was in Congress. So, you know, 160, 70 years is pretty serious. Anyway, I thought that San Bruno did a great job. Hopefully, the conference will be on the West Coast next year. But wherever it is, I, I've already told Cameron, I strongly encourage him to go. I think we need to support San Bruno. I think all the cities of San Mateo County need to support San Bruno, because this is an issue that's not going to go away, mostly because people tend not to notice what's in the ground, because it's out of sight, out of mind. And so that is something that we're going to be paying a lot more attention to. We've had our issues recently, and it is very eye-opening. And I think that's about it. So with that, we're going to move on. Let's see. Give me a second here. Staff reports. Thank you, Bob. I was looking for my page one, and all I could find was page three. So staff comments on city administrative, administrative business?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just two quick comments. One, I wanted to give a quick report on San Carlos's new Inform San Carlos app, which is a tool that our citizens can use to report various issues that they see in the community, potholes, down power lines, you know, maintenance-type issues to the city. To date, in the last couple of weeks, we've got, our app has been downloaded 174 times. We've got about 47 service requests initiated, and 33 have already been completed to date. I also wanted to remind the community and invite everybody to come out and attend the June 6 Black Mountain Properties Open House event. For more information, the details, the times, location, all that, you can visit the city's website, and we'll be doing some direct mail for that event as well.
All right. Thank you, Jeff. Okay, moving on to presentations. We're going to have a, we have a couple of proclamations tonight. I'm going to come around, and I guess you two gentlemen must be Corey Hill and Lance Torneau? All right. Just wanted to make sure we had the right people. Come on up, gentlemen. Apologize if, for those of you who have come to a few of these meetings, I sound like a broken record when I talk about my experience in Boy Scouts. There is a level, I think, I don't remember which is higher, is it Star or Life? Or, I know Eagle's the top. Yeah, I got to Life Scout. I got too old, and I stopped going, and I missed Eagle Scout by five merit badges. So I am here to tell you that achieving the level of Eagle Scout in Boy Scouts is not easy, and very few do it. I don't know what the percentages are, but every one of those merit badges you see is richly earned, because it took a lot of hard work. And I know that a lot of them, some of them I recognize from when, when I was in Boy Scouts 100 years ago. But I, I think these gentlemen are really to be congratulated for what is really not an easy accomplishment when you're a youth and still trying to learn the ways of life and go to school and get your studies done and all that. So I think we owe them a big round of applause. (applause) Lance?
Yes.
Did, did, would I just do it?
Did you want this?
Oh, yes.
Just roll down.
Oh, thank you. All right. I assume you had some major projects. Did you want to tell us a little bit about your projects?
Sure.
Okay.
All right, so my name is Corey Hill. I go to St. Francis. I'm a freshman going into my sophomore year there. I'm 14 years old, and for my project, I built a hexagonal bench around a tree at Heather Elementary School. So my project totaled up to 130 hours. Myself, personally, I did 50 hours, and I had eight different scouts and two adults help me to do like power tools and all that. Some of the challenges I faced were cutting the wood precisely, because the length of a blade matters a lot when you're in that situation, and accounting for the slope, because as you can see, I guess you can't really see it in these pictures, but there's about a 15-degree slope that it was on, and so that made it for, at one side of the bench, it would be taller than some of the little kids there. So I had to have a step down halfway through to make it safe for the kids to sit on and all that. Another challenge was securing it to the ground. So you can see in one of those pictures, there's that black stake, and those were really hard to get in straight and secure them to the bench itself, so that it wouldn't move around and all that. I'd like to personally thank Heather's principal, Pamela Jasso, and the Home Depot for their donations and all that. And yeah, thank you.
(applause)
Hello, everyone. My name is Lance Torneau. I am a freshman at Sarah High School, and I'm 14 years old. And for my Eagle project, I helped do maintenance on a park, Rasak Park, to be exact. And so there I did various things. As you can see in one of the pictures, we are replacing the wooden boards surrounding the grass, as well as, in the same picture, we are fixing the paver stones. And then other things we did was we planted a new tree to replace a tree that had to be taken out because of disease. And it, it was very, very tough. We realized about halfway through that the paver stones need to be put in a certain order, so we had a giant jigsaw puzzle. The overall was a great project. It was, we did over 130 hours, and me personally, I did around 60 hours. And I'd like to thank the city of San Carlos for giving me this project and helping me. And special thanks to Lou Duran and Jean St. Martin, the two people who helped me, guided me through this project. And then, yeah, and thank you.
Congratulations, Earl, Lance. Just looking at those pictures, I now know why I didn't make it to Eagle Scout. Thank you, gentlemen. All right. Okay, we're going to move on to public comment now. Public comment is persons wishing to address the City Council on matters not on the posted agenda may do so. Each speaker is limited to two minutes. If the item you're speaking on is not on the listed agenda, please be advised that the City Council may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed under the Brown Act. The City Council's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or to have the matter placed on a future City Council agenda for a more comprehensive action or report in formal public discussion and input at that time. Okay, and we have two public comment speaker slips at this time. Paul, do you want to go first? Paul Maginetti?
Councilman? Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. I've received complaints from the neighbors that the shuttles are behaving badly again. These are the shuttles on the east side, they're now on the east side of the Samtrans building. At the time, Samtrans complained that it would be an onerous thing for them to have to move to the west side. However, here's an email here saying that if they moved the shuttles to Belmont, it would be, quote, "time-neutral" or "beneficial," depending on the specific route. So those are crocodile tears, as far as I'm concerned. The response, we complained to Samtrans, and their response is, yes, they would like to see enforcement there as well. And they, they blame cars from parking in those shuttle areas that doesn't allow them to park there. Who could have foreseen that? Well, I have another email from them from earlier in the year, where they're complaining that the cabs were parking on the west side where they were. So they can't even enforce their own rules on their own property, and they're asking the city to enforce these. These are a clear and present danger to public safety as pedestrians tried to get around there and bicyclists. We took them at their word that if they were unable to do so, that you would move them back to the west side. So I urge you to err on the side of public safety and move those back. We've got pictures of them doing it. If you want to see them, you can go to the Sheriff's Department, they've got them. But really, it shouldn't be on the city or on the residents to have to police this.
All right. Thank you, Paul. Dimitri Vandelos?
Hi. I'm here to discuss the Praxair toxic site that is a proposed location for a Honda dealership. And I went to a recent planning commission meeting where I presented data that showed that toxics were still on the site, that Praxair had not been doing its semi-annual groundwater monitoring, that the injection technologies that they were using were ineffective, and that other alternative remedial options should be explored immediately. And I was really surprised at, and I have the most recent report that's showing the toxics are all over the site and at levels above 35 feet. Staff at that meeting claimed that there were no toxics higher than 35 feet. And the thing that's important to note here is that it took those toxics a really long time to sink down to get to that level, and they were in the aquifers. So I'm just concerned about the process that we're using, and I'm asking the council to get involved here to make sure that we do due diligence with the Praxair site, the hotel site, and the proposed 100-foot-tall commercial project that's, that's planned by our neighborhood. So I'm bringing the County of San Mateo Health System letters, a couple of them, and the reports. I'm going to bring them as part of the public record. And you all received an email complaint that I provided. I hope that you've read it. I'm also, in case anyone's email challenged, I brought a printout. And I'm also, unfortunately, because we have a, it's, it's not always easy to get the information that we need, I'm requesting a CPRA request regarding the Praxair site and communications between the city. And all the details are in here. It would be very informative for the public to actually understand what's going on. I hope we can start working in a cooperative fashion where we actually remediate these issues. They're very serious. Thank you.
Thank you, Dimitri. All right, is there anyone else that would wish to speak during this? This is for any item not on tonight's agenda. I don't have any other speaker slips. Okay. We are now going to move on to approval of the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are, are items that are considered to be routine and will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless the members of the council, staff, or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. You got a motion?
I would make a motion, Mr. Mayor, to approve Consent Calendar Items 8A through K.
One second.
Okay. And, Mr. Mayor, we, we have an ordinance that's being adopted as part of the...
I'll read the ordinance. Adopt Ordinance 1489, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos repealing Ordinance 1479 concerning Municipal Code Section 8.10 that establish water conservation measures in time of emergency or drought. Just to, just to add on to that, I just want to make sure everybody understands, we are being superseded by state, state regulations, correct? And that's why we're repealing the local one that we did. Don't want anybody to think that we're not trying to conserve water in this town, so...
Right. State regulations are more restrictive than ours.
Right, they are.
Okay. Okay. Bristol?
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes. Okay. Moving on to reports to council. These are updates on key city projects by city department heads and staff and city council subcommittees. They're informational in nature only, and no action will be taken on these items at this meeting. The first item is a report of outreach on potential bond measure to acquire Black Mountain properties.
Mr. Mayor, this item might have a conflict of interest, because my residence is within 500 feet of the Black Mountain properties.
Okay. Thank you.
Honorable mayor, members of the council, my name is Elaine Costello. I'm the Special Projects Director, and I'm here to give you a report on the outreach on a potential bond measure to acquire Black Mountain. In January of 2015, at the council's direction, the city launched an outreach program to find out what were the community's desires for new projects, and were, was, is the community willing to support a bond measure to cover the costs of new projects? The purchase, oh, I need to do this. Thank you. The purchase and preservation of Black Mountain emerged as a high priority. In March of 2015, the council authorized additional outreach to explore the purchase of the properties at Black Mountain. One of the issues that had come up in the survey that was done was that people really didn't know that much about the Black Mountain properties and wanted to learn more about them. So that was a focus of, of the outreach. And since that time, there has been extensive outreach done by the city, which will continue into July, to allow the community opportunities to learn more about the Black Mountain properties and to provide input to the council prior to your making a decision in July whether to move forward with a bond measure. We had, had a number of events. We had two community previews on the site that were attended by over 400 people. The Saturday morning event was attended by over 350 people, which was quite an really amazing turnout. We've had presentations at 14 community groups and the city commissions, and booths at hot harvest nights, Hometown Days, and we're going to be going to San Carlos Airport Day. So there's been a real effort to attend, be out there talking to people about what's going on. In addition, we made information available to people. There's online information, there's a webpage, there's a Facebook page, there's a targeted video. Two, on the print side, two informational mailers were mailed out to the community. There's a fact sheet, frequently asked questions, and a PowerPoint presentation, and all of those are on the website, so that people can find out more about Black Mountain properties. And throughout this outreach process, we were interested in what the community had to say. So at every meeting, we've had comment cards that were collected. We did an online survey of attendees after the community preview events. We did a topic on Shape San Carlos. And as Councilmember Johnson mentioned, we will be doing a second scientific survey in early June. So what I'm going to talk about in terms of the outreach summary is really kind of the people who showed up at events and the people who chose to speak, to, you know, comment on Shape San Carlos. So it's not scientific, but I think it gives you a sense of, of the support and the issues. The interest and the support has been very strong. Attendance at events has been very good. And in the informal survey of the people who went to the community preview events was that almost 90% of those, and these are people who'd been on the site, said that they agreed the city should purchase the Black Mountain properties and that they would support a bond measure. And similarly, people who went on to Shape San Carlos Forum, 96% of those felt that it would be a valuable addition to the community, and that 85% of those would support a bond measure. Now, when we were looking for community input, we were also wanted to know, what are the concerns that people have with this? And they've fallen into three major categories, with cost being the major category. People are concerned about the cost to purchase the land and the additional cost to them of the property taxes to pay for the bond. They're also wonder, how would the land be used for recreation? You know, what are we, what's the city plan? Because we have a short window here to decide on the acquisition, since the property is, parts of the property are on the market, what we've been telling people is that the plan would be that after the acquisition, the city would undertake a master plan with large community input. And the other question is, are there other options for preserving the open space at Black Mountain besides buying it? Could we just zone it for open space, or could we require trails as part of a project? So those are the three major issues that have emerged. The next steps, we're going to continue the outreach until July. We will have another community preview event on Black Mountain on June 6, which is a Saturday starting at 10, from 10 to 12. And we've sent out a mailer about that. We will start, and we will do a scientific survey in early June, and in early July, and that scientific survey will be sent out to people by phone and email, a statistically representative group of San Carlos voters. And then the next thing will be, we will have a special council meeting on July 9 to review the results of that survey. And then in July, the council will make a decision whether to move forward with the bond measure, because that has to be filed with the county by August 7. With that, are there any questions? No action is required.
All right. Cameron?
I don't have a question. I just want to say that I think the staff has done a great job. I think the events have been really well put together. The materials have been really informative and convey a sense of how beautiful Black Mountain is. I know that I've gotten a lot of compliments from my neighbors and other people in the community about how, how good of a job the city has done in kind of outreach and letting people know about this opportunity. So I just want to say thank you for your efforts, you and all the other staff members who've been working on this.
All right.
Nope. No questions. I just had, actually, it's really more of a comment, but I also want to extend my thanks to you and staff. I think you guys have done an outstanding job. And just so the people sitting in the audience and maybe watching TV at home know that this is an ongoing process. We are still receiving comments on all sorts of forums, whether it be Shape San Carlos, or emails, or phone calls, or Nextdoor. All of those comments are, are being, will be read by us. Anything that we get, we will read. And I know that, staff, you're doing your best to respond to those things. We do have another community preview meeting coming up, as you mentioned, so my thanks to you.
Okay.
All right. Okay. Next, we're going to have a report on, a report to council on Climate Action Plan, five-year assessment. This is 9B.
Good evening, honorable mayor, council members. My name is Tara Peterson, the Assistant to the City Manager. And I'm just going to briefly talk a little bit about the Climate Action Plan before I introduce the representatives from PMC, who will talk more in detail.
All of those comments are being, will be read by us. Anything that we get, we will read. And I know that staff, you're doing your best to respond to those things. We do have another community preview meeting coming up, as you mentioned, so my thanks to you.
Okay.
All right. Okay. Next, we're going to have a report on, a report to council on Climate Action Plan, five-year assessment.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members. My name is Tara Peterson, the Assistant to the City Manager, and I'm just going to briefly talk a little bit about the Climate Action Plan before I introduce the representatives from PMC who will talk more in detail. The city's Climate Action Plan was originally adopted in 2009, and as part of that process, there was an idea to update it every five years. So when the council adopted the budget for 2014, 2016, some funds were set aside to do the update. But at that time, council made it clear that they wanted staff to spend as much time and resources on implementing the various climate action measures rather than spending a lot of time on planning. And with that, we, I worked with PMC, which is the consultant who did the original Climate Action Plan back in 2009, and together, we've developed a five-year assessment. So I'd like to introduce Jennifer Venema with PMC, who will provide more details on this.
Thank you, Tara, and members of the council. Happy to be here tonight, and it's quite exciting to get a chance to go back at one of the early plans that was prepared in the Bay Area and throughout the state. So as Tara noted, we completed a strategic effort to really check in on progress. So today, I'll take just a few minutes to give an overview of the Climate Action Plan, talk a little bit more about the effort, share what we learned in terms of the city's achievements, and touch briefly on what's next on the horizon. As Tara introduced just a moment ago, the city's Climate Action Plan was prepared in 2009 as a part of the city's general plan update. It was prepared consistent with state guidance to take a look at the city's contribution to climate change. And these are all big, potentially off-putting terms. And what we're really talking about in terms of the Climate Action Plan is activity within the community. So it's an analysis of the use of energy, of trips. When we look at that activity, we take a step back to see where we are and understand where we're going, and then we provide a series of strategies to achieve some very specific reduction targets in line with state guidance. So the purpose of our effort was to really see how we're doing. Both the general plan and the Climate Action Plan call for regular monitoring and reporting. And as part of this effort, what we were able to do is to review new technical information, confirm progress, and to help staff prioritize and identify next steps to continue working towards those targets in the plan. This graphic is the heart of the Climate Action Plan, and it's really the summary of what the effort is about. If you start on the far left, what this is showing is where we were in 2005 in terms of greenhouse gas emissions, remembering that this is just a way to normalize and put a number on those activities taking place in the community. We use established methods to look at going out through 2030, where we expect our emissions to be. The red line shows the potential worst-case scenario growth. And what we next do is we look at what the state's doing and what we've done locally to ratchet down and understand how we can work towards those targets, which is shown in the, in the blue line there. The great news is that to date, what we have seen is that the city has, we've exceeded the 2020 targets established in the Climate Action Plan, and we continue to make good progress towards post-2020 targets. We're achieving these reductions in greenhouse gas emissions in a couple of ways. First of all, the state is really taking the lead both in mandatory building codes and new standards for electricity production that are benefiting us locally and are part of the story in explaining how we have achieved sizable reductions to date. The example was given earlier, the city's water conservation ordinance, it's being repealed because the state's standards are more restrictive. We see the same thing in terms of the state's building code. And city's building code is now not as restrictive as what the state is requiring. So staff has benefited from the statewide framework and actions underway, building momentum. The city has also made great progress locally. So in 2010, the city did achieve an 18% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions below 2005 levels. That's exceeding the 2020 targets. And the city has largely been able to achieve these reductions by participating in regional programs and really leveraging a lot of the resources that are available. So staff has now signed on to three financing programs for energy efficiency and renewable energy improvements, which residents and businesses can now participate in. These are also referred to as property-assessed clean energy financing programs. The city is also one of three selected pilot cities where PG&E is rolling out a new program to provide customized, targeted energy efficiency information and support to residents throughout the city. And we also see the city's success in implementing adopted policy and code with examples such as the Transit Village Project, where there is now new compact land uses that will be going in, where there's an integration of housing and transit options. On top of all of this, the city has achieved recognition at the statewide level from the Institute of Local Governments, just last year receiving a Beacon Award for Sustainability Practices. All of this is being implemented via very creative and effective methods by staff and is part of why we have seen these reductions. The second part of the story is that we are also continuing to witness ongoing declines in energy use and waste reduction throughout the community. These are reductions that we can't attribute to any one of those programs I just mentioned, but we have seen overall a 30, nearly a 30% reduction in non-residential energy use since the baseline year. We've also seen nearly a 30% reduction in waste. So part of this gives us certainty that we're making continued progress, not just to the 2020 targets. We've already passed those, but that we're continuing to move towards what the Climate Action Plan has outlined for 2030. In order to sustain progress and continue this momentum, city staff will continue with the approach of monitoring and implementing the Climate Action Plan at council's direction, focusing on implementation. And as part of the assessment effort, based on the new technical information we had and review of measures with staff, we have provided updated guidance to help guide near-term steps for implementation. And also a recognition that state guidance continues to evolve and that the city should continue to monitor its contribution towards statewide reductions for post-2020 targets. And with that, it brings us to the close of the presentation. And just a quick note that staff has committed to continue completing annual reports to council on the Climate Action Plan and is committed to coming back with budget needs as part of the annual budgeting process, and will continue to monitor long-term guidance from the state. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions from the council.
All right. Thank you, Jennifer, and thank you as well, Tara. Cameron?
Thanks, Jennifer, for your presentation. It's great to hear, first of all, that San Carlos has already exceeded its 2020 target in terms of greenhouse gas reductions. What I, what I wanted to ask, however, is in reading through the very lengthy and informative memo, it looks like the biggest delta is from the transportation sector. I mean, you talk about that, you know, transportation makes up somewhere between one-half and two-thirds of all of the greenhouse gas emissions that occur within the city limits. And so you show a reduction from 2005 to 2010 of about 50,000 tons. Given that that's the biggest source of the delta, you know, is there any specific city policy that you can see that was directly attributable to driving down greenhouse gas emissions from cars? Or is this just a natural trend of people either reducing the amount of car miles they're driving or upgrading to kind of more fuel-efficient vehicles?
Transportation is a tricky sector. There are a lot of factors, as you noted. The easy answer is that I don't think there is any one specific city program or regulation that can explain those reductions. We do see the greatest variation in transportation, and that is one sector that since 2010, I believe it actually started to increase again. There was no sustained reductions. So that's a sector where the city has limited control over those trips that end or begin here. And we do see the impact of city codes, as I mentioned, on transit-oriented development. We're seeing evidence of groundbreaking projects that will help to reverse the trend. That is one of the more challenging sectors. The city is aware of efforts between SAM Trans and potentially other local partners to try and expand shuttles. So that's a, an area where staff continues to investigate and coordinate.
And do you, do you take into account the section of Highway 101 that essentially happened, that transits through the city boundaries? And do you count all the greenhouse gas emissions? Because it seems to me that's a huge potential source of greenhouse gas emissions over which the city is on a state highway moving through city limits. Seems as though the city could do very little to have an impact on that.
Yeah. That, that's a good question. This, the inventory on which the Climate Action Plan was prepared was originally developed by ICLI, and in coordination with the general plan update, we did review transportation numbers, but this was back in 2009. So I do believe that it most likely does potentially account for those trips on the highway. I would need to confirm that. But it is a large source of emissions and shows part of the challenge in the transportation sector.
To put it mildly. Okay. A couple other quick questions. So one of the other interesting findings that your report shows is that commercial electricity and commercial natural gas is reduced, is, has gone down?
Correct.
Consumption has gone down. What do you attribute that to? Is that due to the economy? Is it due to the change of the, just the change of the businesses? Or do you, do you think that businesses themselves are adopting energy-efficient technology, solar, et cetera? It seems to me, just looking at the numbers, unlikely that the gains that you're seeing would be completely attributable to upgrading technology, but who knows?
It's, there's a mix of factors. We did pull indicators from a variety of sources from 2005 through 2013. What we did see is that while the non-residential energy use dropped, other economic indicators were rising. So we did have confidence that the drop in non-residential energy use was not merely reflective of the recession, and instead, it did seem to reflect the ongoing efficiencies in behavior in addition to other improvements that, again, we, we get data from PG&E on program participation, not enough to help us account for every kilowatt hour, but there was enough of a spread of the data to show that these reductions have been continual.
Okay. You guys write climate action plans for lots of other cities, is that right?
Correct.
So how does 18% stack up relative to other cities in the Bay Area?
18% is a pretty good reduction. We do see reductions for many communities in 2010 due to the recession, but in the communities we've worked in, we've been very careful to look beyond 2010, and it's, it's a notable achievement.
That's great to hear. So then the other key finding, and it's in that, can you go back to that graph that you showed? The line graph?
Yeah.
That you called the key of the plan. So we're, we're ahead of schedule, but we're unlikely to, according to the projections that you have, hit our target for 2030. Could you briefly summarize, kind of at a high level, why you, why you think that is?
I think part of the challenge here is that we are left with the industry approach that calls for the worst-case scenario by 2030 while also showing the honest, most aggressive target that's on the books for 2030. I think that's the crux of the matter, and this assumes full general plan build-out, but the state has already exceeded some of our assumptions. For instance, in terms of the renewables portfolio standard, this does not show ongoing improvement beyond 33%. So what this isn't capturing is what we know now is likely to be achieved at the state level through their programs and regulations. So there's, there's...
So summarize, sorry, I had a little trouble following there. This, this assumes that the state's not going to do anything, but the state is, in fact, enacting policies that are likely to have a positive impact?
This is assuming what we knew in 2009, and it's assuming full city growth. But we know now the state's picking up more action than we had originally expected.
So given not what you're required by law to, to project, but what you as a professional think, do you, do you think that we as a city are likely to hit the target by 2030?
It's challenging to say, and I think the first step would be to confirm that the growth forecast is accurate. This assumes a pretty sizable increase in jobs. I don't have the numbers in front of me right here. I think it's very likely, as we've seen, the city will continue to reduce emissions, but in terms of where we will be in 2030, I think it would take a look at the numbers.
And, sorry, so this, this will be my last question. So given that, you know, you've talked about, there are lots of things outside of our control, you know, hundreds of thousands of cars passing on, on Highway 101, huge state policies regarding electricity generation, you know, building codes, so forth and so on. So for a small city that's staffed, you know, with less than 100 employees, from your perspective, what are, what are some of the most effective things, given that we don't have a huge capacity to implement these kind of policies? We kind of have to pick, you know, a few that we think are going to be most effective. Where would you put your time, effort, and, and resources?
No, I think captured in the successes we've seen so far, it's always useful to focus on both the energy and the waste sectors. That seems to be where you have the quickest turnaround and the greatest potential reductions. So to build on what the city's achieved so far.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Cameron. Jennifer, thank you. Just, I just have a couple of questions. Whenever I read these things, and this is kind of my, I think this is my fourth go-around, I'm always really impressed at our annual report, and we're always doing really well. And then I get emails, and I get memos and things that say, "We're not doing very well." And, and I'm just, I guess my question is, how much of this is under our control? I mean, we, and I'm sorry, Suzanne, not to steal your thunder, she brings up some good points that, you know, we need to, you know, we're legally required to, you know, to commit funding to cap implementation, and that, you know, we need to revise our, you know, our general plan, EIR, and all that. So I'm just wondering, why do we have this difference in, in view of these reports? Why does one entity look at it and say, "It's not enough," and another one look at it and say, "It's just fine, and we're doing fine"? Are we doing enough? Is there more we could do? How much is not in our control? Sorry to just fire so many questions at you, but these are the things that, you know, these are the things that, that come up and, and that we see, and it's, and sometimes it's a little, it's kind of frustrating not to be able to have the answers.
I completely understand. It's a fair, fair questions, and I'll get us started, and I may ask Tammy or Tara if they have more thoughts to add. They're welcome to jump up.
Yeah, and actually, that was meant for any of the three of you.
Thank you.
You were standing up there, so you, you got my questions.
Yeah. In terms of where we're at, the, this... In terms of where we're at, this slide, I think, shows the easiest summary. We have adopted targets for 2020 and 2030, and what we have documented through a full 2010 inventory of community-wide emissions and through analysis of additional data is that the city has exceeded the 2020 target, and it's 2015. The city has committed to the point of conducting annual reports to the council, and staff has gone through great effort to implement the directives that are provided in the plan. And in terms of ongoing direction, and there's, there are conversations at the state level, there's lack of clarity for long-term targets in terms of what the local government contribution will be. That is a closing section in our report where we expect state guidance and recommend that the city refrain from additional amendments to adopted plans until more concrete guidance is in place, and as council previously directed, to use money to help move the lines further to the targets and achieve reductions. Tammy or Tara, you're welcome to add.
So is it fair to say that the state's goals are a moving target?
Absolutely. Right now, the governor, I believe, in April suggested whole new guidelines, and so we'll be reviewing that and looking at what we need to do next, going forward. I did want to mention that part of the difference of opinion, it might be in what the city is initiating and what the city takes advantage of. We look to the region a lot for, to take advantage of the different programs that are available. And sometimes maybe others might think the city should be on the leading edge and leading these programs, where my opinion is, if they're out there and we can grab onto them, and they're regional, and we can take advantage of the relationships we have with the other communities in San Mateo County, that's a great resource. And I think our being able to take advantage of those is very helpful for us.
Does that help us in terms of the cost of implementing these programs?
Absolutely, because we can take advantage, for example, of Energy Watch. San Mateo County Energy Watch is doing a rollout program to do surveys of businesses in the community. Well, we didn't have that program in place, but the city said, "Okay, let's see what we can do to support it." So we're actually going to be sending letters out to all the businesses to offer the support and let them know about the program. And I think that's a great way to partner, something we couldn't have foreseen happening, and something the city just wouldn't have had the resources to put together on its own.
Okay. Well, thank you. Cameron, did you have another question?
Just two quick follow-ups for Jennifer. So the city recently voted to participate in the initial planning phases of a countywide community choice aggregation program. And I wondered, have you looked at the experience in Sonoma County or Marin County where they have implemented community choice aggregation? Do you think it would have a significant impact on the targets or bend the line down further if that was implemented in San Mateo County?
Yes, we have had the opportunity to review the CCAs you mentioned in great detail and work with our other clients. And what we know is that CCA does provide very large potential reductions that often exceed the more conservative estimates in our plans. So this is an issue we're monitoring with several jurisdictions, and it's an item that the city is participating on with San Mateo County.
Right.
And that would help credit.
Great. So, but that is not factored into this analysis at this point?
Correct. We did not revise the quantifications for the reduction measures. We did take a look at some of the state regulations that have been enacted, but did not factor additional local credit in.
Great. Excellent. And just for information, maybe for my colleagues and for others, there is a kickoff meeting this week for the Community Choice Aggregation Project, which is now being called Community Choice Energy, and I'll be attending on Thursday night on behalf of the city. The last thing I wanted to say, which is just a comment for those who may not stay later in the meeting, there is an item on the budget that we're going to be reviewing tonight, and it's a request from staff to add a part-time sustainability coordinator that would be funded at 10 hours, 10 hours a week, I believe. And so that position, while it's not directly on this item, it would be used essentially to help implement the Climate Action Plan, and so I just want to make folks aware of that as well as an interim policy step. Thanks.
All right. Thanks, Cameron. And thanks, Jennifer and Tara.
Thank you.
And there was one other person, I think, that was contributing. Thank you. Okay, we do have a couple of comment cards. First is Kathleen Gallagher.
Good evening. Kathleen Gallagher, 1777 Elizabeth Street. Thank you very much to Councilmember Cameron for talking about the budget, because the concerns that San Carlos Green has, has been a concern since 2009 in terms of actual implementation of the Climate Action Plan. So it is great to hear that there's a consideration for the dedication of resources. San Carlos Green has been watching very closely since 2009 climate action plan implementation. And what I really wanted to stress this evening is hopefully your support for the sustainability coordinator, because even if a person doesn't believe in climate change, there are still some very strong co-benefits in terms of implementing climate action plan programs. Cost savings for businesses, cost savings for residents, water conservation, improved indoor air quality and actually outdoor air quality due to reduced emissions. The overall concern that I believe has sort of evolved with this Climate Action Plan and with this recent report is, I think it was to the point that Tara said, is we don't want to be, San Carlos doesn't want to be on the leading edge, and we would not be on the leading edge at all if we implemented a sustainability coordinator. We would be right in the middle of the pack, because City of Burlingame, you know, a lot of similar cities, Millbrae, Portola Valley, Menlo Park, others throughout the Bay Area have these dedicated staff. And what we're asking is for your consideration to add that dedicated staff person. Very quickly, San Carlos has 1.5 million in franchise fees from the Shoreway Environmental Center, from the material recovery facility, the transfer station. And we would ask that a portion of those fees be considered for the sustainability coordinator. A potential next step is an ad hoc committee to review the model of what other cities have done, the best way to use these resources. There's a lot of excellent models out there. So I thank you for your consideration, and I hope that we can get that sustainability coordinator. Thanks.
Great. Thanks, Kathleen. Next speaker is Suzanne Emerson.
Suzanne Emerson of San Carlos, on behalf of San Carlos Green. We're happy to see that the numbers are good for 2010 and looking forward to 2015. We're really hoping that those are not just reductions based on economic dips and that those really are long-term trends as opposed to economic dips. The memo that you have in front of you is mostly because you don't want to hear me up here citing legal authority, and that has all the footnotes in it. There are two concerns that we have, mostly relating to legal aspects of the Climate Action Plan. When it was adopted, it was part of the environmental impact report for the general plan update. So the reduction in greenhouse gas emissions in the Climate Action Plan counterbalances the build-out that's allowed under the general plan for the increased density. So there's a couple aspects that if we're no longer having a climate action plan that is even slated to be meeting the 2030 goal that's adopted with the environmental impact report, it raises some questions about the legality of our climate action plan and the underlying environmental impact report. So we are hoping that the city will continue to monitor what's happening here and making sure we really are on track for 2030 and not just have, "Let's hope the state takes care of it for us" as a major component of our plan. And then the second aspect that we wanted to just mention was that there is new case law since the time that the Climate Action Plan was adopted, saying that a municipality cannot rely upon unfunded programs to meet their cap goals. And so we do hope the city steps forward to make sure that there is funding for the implementation of the Climate Action Plan. Thank you very much.
All right. Thanks, Suzanne. Okay. Don't believe, this is a report to council, so, all right. Oh, let me just ask, is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this before we move on to the next item? Okay. All right. And next, I'm moving on to new business. 10A, consideration of adopting a resolution authorizing the Parks and Recreation Director to accept donations in the amount of $50,000 from the Friends of the San Carlos Adult Community Center and $42,013 from the Elaine Farmicus Trust in appropriating the donated funds to the Adult Community Center renovation project C9322. Hello, Christine.
Hello, I'm Mr. Mayor. Good evening, City Council and Mayor Collins. Christine Boland, Parks and Recreation Director. The action before you this evening is the best item on the agenda, in my opinion. It's authorizing acceptance of the donations totaling the amount you just mentioned, $90,042.13, and appropriating the funds to the Adult Center project. I would like to take this opportunity to talk about the donors. I have one slide for you this evening. Quickly, taking them in reverse order, the Elaine Farmicus Trust, we were delighted last year with the news that a former patron, Belmont resident, actually, and former patron of the Adult Community Center, Elaine Farmicus, left a gracious donation of $40,042 to the center, and we were able to spend it in whatever capacity we wished, and the only caveat was that we report back to her niece on how it was spent. So we knew this project was coming forward, and we held the funds waiting for the project. The second donor is a gracious donation of $50,000 from the Friends of the San Carlos Adult Community Center. Just a few words on what they did to earn this money. The Friends have held crab feeds, annual crab feeds, and other fundraisers over the last few years. They make an annual appeal to their memberships for donations for things like this and to keep the programming running. They also fund the entertainment every month at their monthly luncheon. So they have to basically run out and beat the bushes in town and bring in the funds to be able to donate to great projects like this. Mr. Mayor, at this time, I'd like to ask President Patty Brown of the San Carlos Friends of the Adult Center to come forward with her entourage. She's got a little ceremonial gift for you. Patty? Any of the other Friends of the Adult Center that would like to come forward, this would be the opportunity now.
Did you want me to come around and?
Yes, please.
Take that?
Absolutely.
Anytime there's a check, I'm interested.
Could you get up fast enough?
On behalf of the Friends of the San Carlos Adult Community Center, we're proud to present to the city and the San Carlos Adult Community Center $50,000 that we plan to use to refurbish and furnish, some new furnishings for the renovated facility. So on behalf of the Friends...
Oh, this is very nice.
Thank you, Patty. And Judy. And Ron. I always like big checks. This is great. I would like to say that, you know, I've been a member of various community organizations, most recently Kiwanis Club, and I've been on boards of charitable organizations. I can tell you, it's really hard to raise money. In a town with 29,000 people, you've got a lot of community service organizations and foundations, it's very difficult to raise money. I was once on the Educational Foundation, one of the original members, and our goal was to raise 5,000, and we failed. So to raise 10 times that much is very impressive. I think the board deserves a great amount of credit for their efforts. So thank you all very much. Gentlemen, you want to come over? They want all of us in the picture?
You do.
And Christine? Okay. So, okay. Okay. So, we're not quite done with this item. We do need to vote to accept the money, so unless there's any public comment, I'm going to entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I move to adopt Resolution 2015 dash...
56.
56. A resolution of the City of San Carlos, the resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos authorizing the Parks and Recreation Director to accept donations in the amount of $50,000 from the Friends of the San Carlos Adult Community Center and $40,042.13 from the Elaine Farmicus Trust in appropriating the donated funds to the Adult Community Center renovation project C9322.
Second. Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none? Crystal?
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
And Mayor Collins?
Yes. Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Beautiful. All right. Good job.
All right. We're going to move on to new business item 10B. This is actually a public hearing. This is consideration of a resolution adopting the mitigation monitoring and reporting program and introduce ordinance approving the Wheeler Plaza planned development plan and related zoning map amendment to rezone the project site from mixed-use downtown core MU-DC zoning district to planned development PD zoning district at Wheeler Plaza, 1245 San Carlos Avenue, 1249 to 1265 San Carlos Avenue, and 657 Walnut Street. Al Savae.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. So for this evening, what we thought we would do is provide you with a little bit of background to bring you back up to speed on where the project has been and where it is today. We'll have the architect, Jessica Music, talk to you about the architectural design. We'll have John McMorro, the developer and our partner with Silverstone Communities, talk about the construction parking plan. And then Lisa Costas Sanders, our principal planner, will talk about the entitlements. In terms of the history of the project, the project goes back even before 2000. You can see we started 2000 on the screen there. There was a Citizens Advisory Committee that was formed back in the late '90s by the City Council. And at that time, when the Citizens Advisory Committee put together a parking study for the downtown, they had suggested that the city consider a mixed-use development project at the Wheeler Plaza site, and that public parking be a component of that. That turned out to be an idea that got momentum, and the city began purchasing properties as early as 2000. Back then, we had a redevelopment agency, and the city began using those funds to acquire properties. We also got the partnership going with Silverstone Communities, who we selected through a competitive process. We had a number of community meetings, even before we put pencil to paper, before there was a design for Wheeler Plaza at all. We went to the community and asked folks, "Well, if there was to be a development here, what would you like to see in it?" And we believe that the things that the community has asked for have been designed into the project. Again, number of community meetings at every step of the way. We wanted to make sure the community was informed and that we got feedback. An EIR was approved back in, earlier in 2012, and most recently, the Planning Commission reviewed this project and has a recommendation to you to approve the project in a five-to-zero vote this evening. These are some early images of Wheeler Plaza. We also got the partnership going with Silverstone Communities, who we selected through a competitive process. We had a number of community meetings, even before we put pencil to paper, before there was a design for Wheeler Plaza at all. We went to the community and asked folks, well, if there was to be a development here, what would you like to see in it? And we believe that the things that the community has asked for have been designed into the project. Again, number of community meetings at every step of the way. We wanted to make sure the community was informed and that we got feedback. An EIR was approved back in... Earlier in 2012, and most recently, the Planning Commission reviewed this project and has a recommendation to you to approve the project in a five-to-zero vote this evening. These are some early images of Wheeler Plaza. It looks a little bit different today, but you'll see that some of the forms and the scale massing is the same. Just to go back a little bit and give you a little bit of orientation, this is the downtown core, so that red line represents the historic downtown core of San Carlos, and you'll see Wheeler Plaza at the lower left-hand corner of the screen there, and it's been a city parking lot for many, many years. And you'll see where it is located in the downtown, near the Caltrain Depot, just a stone's throw from the Caltrain Depot, where you can catch the train or other commuter services down to San Jose, up to San Francisco. It's also just a stone's throw from City Hall and the library, and it's right in the heart of our downtown. And so, it's in a really unique location in San Carlos, in a great downtown, in the Bay Area, in Silicon Valley. So, why Wheeler Plaza in the first place? I think everybody knows that we have a gem of a downtown, and it's very traditional in terms of its design and form, and many of us view downtown as the cultural and social heart of the community, and we shouldn't take change lightly. On the other hand, this is an opportunity for more downtown vibrancy and the vitality to improve the local economy. It's a unique catalyst opportunity for the continuing success and resiliency of downtown, and I think an opportunity to challenge ourselves to do better. It would mean more downtown housing, new and improved retail space, a gathering area, and more parking. The project has been designed to fit in with the idea of our traditional downtown, balanced with the need to sustain its health and vitality, which are the heart of the community's leisure time, retail, and entertainment activities. So, let's drill down a little bit, take a little bit of a closer look at Wheeler Plaza. The blue area, the blue line there, represents the outline of the planned area, and those boxes, those colored boxes in there represent parcels on the left that we have purchased over the years. The two yellow boxes, for instance, at the lower part of the screen, were purchased with redevelopment agency dollars, as were the other two red boxes at the left-hand corner of the screen. The one at the top of the screen on Laurel Street there is the old Foodville building, and the one below it, we call it the furniture building. And so, those four pieces were assembled over the years using redevelopment agency dollars. They were purchased with two sets of funds from the redevelopment agency. The ones in yellow, when the redevelopment agencies were dissolved in the state of California a few years ago, basically, the state of California said that all the cities in the state have to sell the properties that they purchased with redevelopment dollars. However, we'll let you have the ones that you purchased with city housing dollars or for a future housing asset. So, that's what they told us. They said, you can keep those two in the yellow, but with the other two, you're going to have to sell those. And we said to the state that that's a huge problem for this project. Basically, it will kill the project. We need at least, for instance, that furniture site to make it a rectangular site. We need the other site at Foodville to meet some of the objectives that were set forth by the community and for some other needs that we had. So, we went back and forth with the state and talked to them for a long time, and finally, we talked to them for so long, they said, okay, I'll tell you what. If you can get all the taxing agencies in the county to agree and get all their boards to sign resolutions that they're in agreement, that you can use these parcels in the development, and they think it's a good idea, we'll let you keep them. And I think they did that because they didn't think that we could do it. But what we did, we said, okay, we rolled up our sleeves, and we went to these, you see 16 agencies there, plus the city of San Carlos, of course. We went to every one of those agencies and explained the Wheeler Plaza project to them, and when we explained it to them, they got it, and they felt like, well, we should be a partner in this project as it benefits everybody. It rises all of us up together. Why are they in support? Well, it does make financial sense. Basically, if we would have sold the property, maybe $4 or $5 million versus a much larger share of the revenue as Wheeler Plaza goes forward over the years. So, near-term versus long-term benefit. So, they're in support of this project. In terms of community benefits, through mixed-use development, there is potential to add life to the area while maintaining the character and integrity of our downtown. These developments attract residents who prefer a more urban lifestyle than some, and I think also those who are seeking a more affordable option than single-family homes. At our last community meeting, for instance, we... I talked to a number of folks that came down. Some were empty nesters, and they said, we want to be where the action is, you know, we want to move down to downtown, have dinner with our friends, be near transit, maybe not use the car as much. So, there's a lot of people in our community that have an interest, and I think also, there's a lot of young people these days who want to be able to commute, want to be able to get to the Caltrain station, go up to San Francisco, down to San Jose. They also... This kind of development also offers renewed vibrancy for our downtown and the retailers who benefit from having this active customer base and all within walking distance of our restaurants and services and groceries. And then, finally, this is the development program. So, this is what we ended up with, 109 condos, market-rate units, about 10,000 square feet of new Class A retail on San Carlos Avenue. On the Laurel Street side, that piece that I showed you where Foodville was, the intent is to use that for valet parking during construction, and also, in the future, do a new project that would provide a public gathering space and maybe some restaurant space at the ground floor, some office space above to activate that plaza. In terms of the parking, we would be increasing the parking. We have about 187 parking spaces at the Wheeler Plaza now, and it would go up to about 252 spaces, so a fairly significant increase in free downtown public parking, and then all the residential parking will be below. One thing I meant to mention is, one of the things that we may be able to have with this development is also a new affordable housing project on Cherry Street. There's a piece of property that is owned by Hip Housing that the city helped to fund their purchase of that, and they're interested in partnering with the city on an affordable housing project, and the proceeds from... The below-market rate proceeds from this development would... Could go into funding that project. So, with that, I'm going to conclude my comments, and I'm going to ask Jessica Music to come up and talk about the architecture.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Jessica Music, and I'm with KTGY. Al did a great job kind of going through the project history and the setup, and it's my pleasure tonight to present a little bit more information on the site design and the actual architecture. So, this is the project site. This shows the boundaries kind of bound by San Carlos Avenue and Walnut with fingers stretching out to Laurel Street and Cherry. This is a little closer view of the site, and also, this slide emphasizes the main components of the project. The 252 public parking stall garage that Al described, as well as the 10,000 square feet of retail along San Carlos. Also featured is the lobby that residents can access off of Walnut, as well as kind of the future redevelopment site in City Plaza that stretches along the backside out onto Laurel. That 10,000 square feet of retail space is accessed off of San Carlos. There's really two entry points, with the primary being San Carlos and actually, a secondary being off of an arcade that runs between the retail space and the parking structure. This slide emphasizes the entry points to the residential lobby, directly off of Walnut, as well as off of a small pedestrian plaza space on Walnut between the lobby and the arcade running behind the retail space. There's multiple points of pedestrian connection on the site. The primary spine for pedestrian circulation actually occurs behind that retail space, and it connects Walnut out onto Laurel Street. Off of that main spine, there's also access to San Carlos through the Sister City Alley, and also, the ability to access the parking garage. There's also multiple connection points to the public parking, both off of Walnut and the alleyway, and ultimately, onto Laurel. This slide shows the two vehicular entry points into the garage. The one on the far right is the residential vehicular entry point. That connection leads down to a subterranean level of parking. The one mid-block is the public parking entry point that connects to the ground level, kind of surface parking, and then will ultimately lead you to an upper level. Both of those connection points, we've... We received some comments from the Planning Commission. Their request was to widen those entry points to really enhance visibility, so we've worked with staff and proposed a design that widens those entry points by a couple feet. This project is really inherently sustainable, and Al touched on the fact that we are LEED Silver Equivalent. Also, by nature of the site's location, there's just multiple opportunities to bike and walk to transit and to access shops and dining opportunities on Laurel Street. We're also providing quite a bit of public and resident bicycle parking opportunities. There'll be electrical vehicle charging stations. We're looking at using drought-tolerant landscaping. There's storm water treatment and just opportunities for water and energy efficiency. This is a closer look at the ground-level plan. In the... Actually, I'm not sure if I can point. Well, directly off of the retail arcade space, you can see and highlighted in the kind of salmon color is the bicycle parking, and that's... Will be accessed off of the main pedestrian plaza, as well as the arcade, and serves both the public and residents. This is the upper level of a public parking space. This slide also shows that the retail space is double-height. There's a 20-foot-high ceiling within that retail zone. This really sets the retail up to be successful. And this is the third level of the project. This is the first level of residential. You can see in the section that the residential units basically sit above the public parking garage and the retail space. This slide also shows how the residents live off of courtyard spaces that open up onto Walnut. There's 109 total residential units on the project with a mix of one, two, and three bedrooms. This is the uppermost level of the residential units. This slide shows how the units actually step back off of San Carlos by about 10 to 13 feet. We've also identified some key corners on the project where the massing steps back on Walnut, as well as along the alleyway. This is a view of the architecture standing at the corner of San Carlos and Walnut. This slide actually highlights the recessed arcade accessed off of San Carlos and Walnut. This arcade is an opportunity for outdoor dining for the retail space. This slide also shows the three levels of residential above the retail and the public parking structure, with the third floor stepping back off of San Carlos. This slide is looking further down Walnut. You can see in this slide how the massing starts to break away, and the courtyards start to reveal themselves at the street edges. This slide also shows the residential lobby and gives a closer shot of the pedestrian plaza off of Walnut, as well as the arcade that runs behind the retail between the retail and that plaza space. This is a close-up view of some of the materials used on the project and kind of showing the high-quality use of stone and clay roofing tiles, dark windows, smooth stucco, decorative awnings. This is a blow-up shot of the pedestrian plaza off of Walnut Street. This view also shows the connection, the arcade connection that runs behind the retail space and the plaza and parking structure. This is a view actually standing with your back to Laurel. To your left would be the future public plaza space. This is looking back towards that arcade that runs between the garage and the retail. This is as equally an important facade to the building as San Carlos and Walnut are, and we've really worked with staff and the applicant to enhance the architecture in this zone, to use premium materials and really emphasize this connection in that arcade. This is a view standing along San Carlos. This gives you a perspective looking down the Sister City Lane, back toward the alleyway. It also shows the strong retail base along Walnut and emphasizes the quality and the premium materials that I described earlier. This is a close-up view of those parking entry points that I described, and at the request of the Planning Commission, we worked with staff to widen those areas in order to increase visibility from cars pulling out of the garage and widen up that entryway. With that, I'll turn the presentation over to John.
I'm John McMorrow with Silverstone Communities. Well, we're at a bit of a historical moment tonight. This has been over 10 years in the making, and I really wanted to...
I adhere when it started, John.
Yeah. I've been here six. But I really wanted to thank staff. They have just been phenomenal throughout this process, and I think Al really kind of understated how incredible the staff was in getting this process and this project through the RDA and through the state. I don't know of another community that was able to do what they did. That was just... It was phenomenal. I'd also like to thank the council members and the planning commissioners for all of them giving their time to meet with me, go through the project, and help shape where it is today. And this has been a while. I think I'd be remiss to not thank Omar Ahmad and our mayor's Randy Royce. They were involved in the very beginning. They were advocates when we came on board and really helped us get this project to be the great project it is for the city today. So, with that, I'm going to just walk through the timeline a bit and what we're going to do with the parking during the interim, because it's important to us that we make sure that the convenient parking that's there now is maintained during construction. We know that's going to be rough for the retailers, but we want to make it actually a positive, if there's any way possible for us to do that. And the way we are going to do it is about this time next year, we're going to have... Foodville will be demolished, and that will be repaved and restripped, and that'll be our primary point at this point for valet parking. How do I switch? Once that's completely set up, we will then take down the Wheeler Plaza parking that's there now, fence it off, and begin construction. We want to make sure that we have our valet program set up properly to be able to accommodate the number of cars, so we had a consultant go out and sit there for three days and measure all the cars that come in and out and when the peak time is, and, you know, as you guys probably would have guessed, the peak time is at lunch, when all 187 spaces are taken in Wheeler Plaza. So, we have designed our valet program to make sure we can accommodate at least that. The primary point is, as I've said, at the Foodville site. At that juncture, we're going to be able to park 54 spaces with valet parking. The secondary spot is at the Samtrans Garage, just up the street. The upper level of that is primarily unused, and with valet parking, we believe we're going to be able to achieve some 108 spaces in that location. And then, the third location is along El Comino Real at the railroad right-of-way, and that location that's shown in red may slide down a little bit if the Transit Village is going in at the same time, but we'll be able to get right-of-way there for some 140 cars. This also will be where the construction parking is located, and we will be shuttling the construction parking from this location.
Sorry, John, can I... Sorry, the disembodied boy.
Can I -- sorry, the disembodied voice over. Can we pause just for a moment because our quorum just left the room?
I was on a roll.
See, I know you were. I apologize.
We didn't notice.
You didn't notice? Great. Thanks, I'm invisible. Wonderful. 10 years counted, John, we're still--
Ah. It's not that--
All right.
He's still talking. You had to stop because you left the quorum.
Oh, I apologize. I just -- I thought you were just continuing your narrative and--
He was, but the city attorney made us stop.
Oh, I apologize. Not used to just having three of us here.
So in this location, we'll be able to park 140 spaces. And if you then do the math, the requirement that we're looking for is to replace 187 spaces, we'll be able to get 54, 108, 140. That's 302, so we'll have some excess capacity there. A couple of things that are important is, you know, we have hot harvest nights, and those will be in the evening. In the evening, the Samtrans Garage will be able to have more capacity because that's during the day used as an office site, and we'll be able to park more cars there. One correction I do want to make in the report is our valet program won't end at 5:00 during the day. It really needs to continue on, and it will, into the evening. As we get going, we'll figure out if it's stopping at 11, 12, you know, what -- we'll figure out when that point is, when people can park in the 54 spaces, but it will not end at 5:00. And if you have any questions on that, I'm available. Okay. One other thing. I'm sorry. We wanted to also make sure, you know, we've got the cars being picked up, that when people come to get their cars, that we're state-of-the-art. So we have a kiosk set up on Laurel, but it's possible that it's going to be more advantageous to have kiosks down Laurel. We have the opportunity to do that. It's a very flexible system. If we need to have a kiosk on San Carlos, we can do that because all those retail spaces that are currently in front of Hole-in-One Liquors and such, they will become available because that retail's going to be torn down during construction. And you can side-park there, be out of traffic, and safely have a kiosk there as well. And then when you pick up your car, we want people to have the ability to text and come up with other ways so that they can quickly have their car when they want it and have it be a plus. Maybe the kiosk can pick them up, you know, down Laurel or wherever they're shopping. So we think there's a way for this to actually be more convenient than the current parking lot. Thank you.
All right. Cameron, you have some questions? Or do we have -- oh, I'm sorry.
Wait, there's more.
There's more. Sorry, Lisa.
Thank you. The action before the city council tonight is two. One is to adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and the second is the zoning map amendment to rezone the site from MUDC to PD. The Planning Commission already took action on the design review, the tentative map, the grading and dirt hall, the below-market-rate housing plan, and the transportation demand management plan, and I'll quickly walk through each of those for you. So the mitigation monitoring and reporting plan, the Planning Commission did recommend that the city council adopt that, and that implements the mitigation measures that were identified in the final environmental impact report. Those measures include some best-management practices during construction, activating the traffic signal on Holly and Laurel, and converting Laurel Street at Cherry to a four-way stop-controlled intersection. So that's one action you'll be taking this evening if you're prepared to do so. And then the second is the PD zoning and plan development plan. The Planning Commission also recommends the city council adopt the plan development plan, and that would be your adopting the zoning that is specific to this project. We did -- we're able to find in the staff report analysis that the PD is consistent with the general plan, and this PD includes some very minor variations from the underlying zoning district, the MUDC. And that includes allowing the five stories along Walnut Street, an increased ridge height of three inches over the maximum height limit, and reduced parking setback. We have a setback requirement for parking, and as you can understand, that doesn't quite fit when we have a public parking structure. Also, having the commercial parking be shared with the residential and not requiring a loading zone for the commercial. And then the items that the Planning Commission took action on. The Planning Commission approved the design, noted the high-quality design with the architectural details reflecting the Spanish Mission style. We also have the upper-level building setbacks the architect reviewed for you, as well as the ground-level pedestrian scale, high-quality finished materials. Planning Commission also approved the tentative parcel map. The tentative map merges the existing parcels and creates two parcels, and one parcel will be for the 109 residential condominium units, the five commercial condo units, the city-owned parcel for the public parking, as well as public access easement along the eastern portion of the property, as well as the pedestrian path. And the parcel two is the city-owned public access parcel, and that's between the project and the rear of the Laurel Street businesses. The grading and dirt hall permit was also approved by Planning Commission. That's the grading for the basement level, and the dirt hall route was specified as options to Highway 101 or 280, and it does not allow the use of Holly Street for the dirt hall route unless an exception is granted by the Public Works Director. The below-market-rate housing plan was also approved by the Planning Commission. Based on previous direction by the city council, the developers required to pay a below-market-rate in lieu fee. That fee will be calculated at time of building permit issuance, and it's estimated at 3.7 million. If the code requirement below-market-rate ordinance was applied, that would require 16 affordable units on-site, 11 market rate, five low income. But the council direction previously was to leverage those BMR funds to create more affordable housing units at lower income levels than would have been provided on-site through the implementation of the ordinance. And finally, the transportation demand management plan. Planning Commission also approved. As indicated, the project's located within close proximity to train, bus, downtown amenities, so it's inherently a TOD project. There's also, though, some onsite measures that include a lot of bicycle storage, transit information, and unbundled parking. Next steps would be your consideration of the mitigation monitoring and reporting plan, as well as the plan development rezoning. Construction would begin early next year. The developer would implement the interim parking plan. There would be continued public access through that rear accessway, so the businesses on Laurel Street would have continued access. The public parking structure is anticipated to open in 2017, so as soon as that is ready, it will be open to the public while construction continues on the residential and commercial, and that's anticipated to be completed in 2019. And the recommendation before you is to adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program and introduce the zoning map amendment to rezone from MUDC to PD and approve the plan of development. We would now be happy to answer any of your questions.
Just could ask, is there -- are there more? Okay. Cameron?
Thank you, Ron. So first, I want to congratulate staff, but this is a huge project for our city, and it was, you know, clutched from the jaws of defeat. I mean, it required our staff to convince over a dozen public agencies not to think in their short-term economic self-interest, which is a huge accomplishment. So congratulations. I had three quick topics I want to talk about. My first question's for Al. So Al, when this was on -- when I was on the Economic Development Commission, we talked about the structure of the deal was such that the city would sort of participate in the economics if the project exceeded a certain amount of sales. Is that still part of this? Did I miss something? Could you tell me a little bit more about that?
Yeah, so that is part of the deal. And a development agreement was approved by the council a year and a half or so ago. And in that development agreement, we said that anything above a certain number, the city would get a certain percentage. It would get participation in the upside of sales.
And do you guys have a sense, an estimate, as to what that might be at this point? Or is it too early to tell?
The dollars? We really don't know, but we know that the market is really good right now. So there's a, you know, I think there's a -- to be cautiously optimistic, I would say that the city has a good chance in participating in that upside.
That's great to hear. Okay, thanks. I wanted to ask John a question about parking. So I'm very concerned about parking, and I hope this isn't the last time we talk about the parking plan in front of the city council. One thing I wanted to bring up is you talk about that this is going to create 417 construction jobs. Now, that may not be simultaneously 417 workers on-site, but in the front, you say, you know, this will be 417 construction jobs, and then you talk about how there's going to be essentially 140 construction parking spots. And then in your description, you said we may have the Transit Village, which is a larger project, under construction simultaneously. So I wanted to see, what do you think about construction parking? Can you accommodate the number of construction parking?
Yeah, well, if you remember that one slide that showed the right-of-way, you're right. Our construction jobs aren't all on-site at one time, but that right-of-way is quite long, so if we need to expand it, there's the opportunity to do so. So it goes all the way down to Arroyo, I think.
And have you worked that out with Samtrans such that if the Transit Village is happening at the same time, they're not going to want to use that same area for their construction parking?
We have talked with Samtrans, and they are fine with us using the right-of-way. We don't have a formal agreement. When the Transit Village starts and we have our timeline set, we'll really be able to sit down and nail that, those details down.
Okay. All right. Well, I just want to state for the record, for you and for staff, that I love the project, but I'm very concerned about parking and logistics. And I think, you know, this is a big ask for our residents, but also for the local businesses in and around Laurel Street, that, you know, you're talking about construction starting in 2016 and ending in 2019, and I know you're going to get a parking garage at some point in the middle of there, but I think we want to make sure that it goes as smooth as possible. So the final question that I had, I think, is for Al, which is, in the plans, the broader vision is the public plaza, and I wanted to get a high-level understanding of the timeline and where the public plaza sits right now.
Well, in terms of the public plaza, that would be in the same place we're going to be doing valet parking. So as soon as the valet parking is not needed, that essentially would be available to start, you know, going in earnest into some kind of a planning program. Earlier, the council had provided direction that you wish to go to the marketplace with that piece of property, similar to what we did with Wheeler, and see if you can get a partner to do the deal. And so that would -- that could happen a little earlier. We could start that process and hit the ground running as soon as that piece of property was available. So again, it depends on construction.
Okay. Sorry, one last question occurred to me. So I know in the kind of final design phases, there was some feedback about the parking garage, both whether or not the cars would be visible from the public plaza, and the second is whether or not the parking garage would be at grade or whether you would have to step down. So if you had a stroller or something like that, whether you'd have to go down steps. Could you just tell me where we landed on those two?
So here you see the ground level, and it was a real big concern for a good number of people in the community that that gray area at the top of the screen, that long linear gray area, is the service alley where service vehicles would enter from Cherry and then exit on San Carlos Avenue. And the thing about the retailers along the back there, like Laboo and the bank and others, and just others that use those spaces, they -- people wanted to have that feeling of just walking straight across. They don't want to go up steps. They didn't want to come back down. The challenge that we had with this is that there's about a four-foot grade differential between Walnut Street and the service alley. And so when this first came in, you know, the easier way to do things, I guess, was to slope things up a little bit, but it wasn't flush. So there was maybe a three-foot difference between that service alley and the parking garage. And we went, you know, we heard from folks in the community and on staff, too, we felt like that was just an imperative, that it had to be flat. So we tasked John and his engineers to go back to the drawing board, and they did. And it was a big challenge. And also, the other key issue there was the disabled parking along the left where you have the retail. We wanted that flat, too. And there was a grade differential there as well. So it's very, very challenging to get those disabled parking spaces, same as that pathway there, so you could walk, those folks could go straight into those retail businesses and back up into San Carlos, and also exit from the parking garage straight through. And so they were able to go back. It took a lot of work, but they went back and they were able to redesign the structure. They actually lowered the structure, looked at the water table very, very closely, and were able to get it just right to the water table, and it kind of made everything work out. So that's how that worked out. The other issue that--
So great. Just so I understand, so you will, when you park on the street level, if you've got your kids in a stroller, you don't have to go down steps?
That's correct.
So you can just roll right out?
Right.
Okay, great.
Why are you asking that question?
Yeah.
From personal experience.
Yes. Couple of other things about the garage. I mean, I, you know, I got to say, we spent a tremendous amount of time and effort on the garage and trying to understand it and trying to get it to work functionally. We even hired our own peer-review engineer, one of the best parking garage engineers around, to make sure that we were doing it right. And some of the things on the interior, some other changes that were made, is on the interior right, you'll see some Ts kind of cross sideways, Ts at the middle of the structure there, and those are structural walls. And the first iteration had one pretty much a continuous wall right in the middle. One of the things we -- one of our comments was, no, we got to open that up. We want people to be able to walk across. So we added a pedestrian throughfare in the right-hand section. You'll see a gray area there, so you can walk from one side of that structure all the way across without having to go around a bunch of walls and without getting into traffic too much as well. So that was another critical change that was made. Let me go back and talk a little bit about the architectural design along the alley. Let's see if I can find a picture of that. You had asked something about the openings at the rear of the building, and I'm not sure if we have that elevation. Oh, we do not. Okay, well, that's good enough. On the left-hand side--
Go back one.
Oh, okay.
Right there.
Yeah, okay, that's a good one. You'll see that there's, on the left, lower-left-hand side of the screen, you'll see those screens there, and there was a lot of debate about whether to have that section open. Again, there was a desire, I think, from a lot of folks to just have this open feeling, maybe like you'd see at Hillsdale Mall. When you go to Hillsdale Mall on the ground floor, you can walk right into Nordstrom's and such. And so there was a couple of iterations of design, and one of the other concerns was light. You know, how can we get light in there and have sort of a feeling of openness there? You know, how can we get light in there and have sort of a, a feeling of openness there? And we were juggling that with the idea that there is an opportunity to use that service alley as a multipurpose area. So that, that service alley, as you can see, the paving in the, in the plaza, maybe, probably, it's decorative paving, it's a nice area. Well, when that service alley is not being used for service vehicles, we can open it for public use. We can use it for hot harvest nights. We can use it for dining, you know, occasions or whatever. It'll be, you know, hopefully it'll be nice on the Wheeler side. Perhaps those other businesses could improve the back. And we'd have a, a nice multipurpose area. So when we took the site, we did take a, a local property owner had actually done some designs with an architect to show what it would look like open, and asked us to take those designs to the Economic Development Advisory Commission for their review. We did that. EDAC said, we understand, you know, that, that interest in, in having that openness. But at the same time, we see perhaps a greater public benefit in this idea of, of usage of this, of this alleyway. And we don't want to see vehicles, that we just think aesthetically, it's just not as pleasing. So that one of the compromises that was made in that design is up, on the upper level, you'll see a dark area there. That's open so that light can come in. And that screening is not solid screening, it's architectural screening that, where light will go through it, and you can kind of maybe see the inside and the outside. So that was the compromise.
That's great. That's great to hear. All right, thank you.
All right, Bob?
Al, I'm sorry, don't go, don't go away. Don't go away, Al. You know, you, you brought up a point about that, that driveway, that, that alleyway. And I had a question, but you, you sort of answered it. So we're going to limit delivery hours, then? Is that what we're going to do?
Yes, that, we did discuss that at the Planning Commission, and we want to do something that's reasonable and work with those businesses to find out some reasonable hours. But yes, limited.
Okay. Because obviously, if people are walking through, there's going to have to be some sort of a, I don't know. Well, I'm sure somebody will figure it out. Because if you're coming out of that breezeway, you're going to have to be paying attention, so to speak. Because cars are going to be, or trucks could be flying by, so. And assuming, yeah, okay. Well, we're going to work on that on the, when it comes to pass, I know. When the parking, two parking areas, are you going to have it blocked off so that people, perhaps, that are challenged in directions like myself, will know which one to go into? Or will not be able to get into the residential one? Will it have an arm or something? John? Because otherwise, I can see people just, oh, there's, there's parking.
Right, right. So we will have signage on the outside of the building to clearly indicate which one's residential. And that will have a gate, so you wouldn't be able to go in.
Yeah, that's fine.
And then the other thing with the public garage, every space will have a monitor. So when you go into the public garage, there will be signs directing you to what space is available.
Oh, that's great.
So you're not wandering around.
My more, more concern was, was, like I said, that people go in the wrong place. If there's an arm, they can't go in it. So that's, that's great. Thank you. And John, thank you for making the comment, because I was, I found it on page 10 of 10 of the Hexicon Report, saying it was only going to be valet from seven to six. And I actually brought it up with Mr. Malpe earlier today. Thank you for, because people, it's very crowded during lunchtime, but I guarantee you, at dinnertime, it's also very crowded. So, thank you. And you answered the question in the, in the report, it's going to take, it looks like about a year ballpark to build the, the structure. So we'll have to deal with parking for about a year, it looks like. Okay? Or less?
More or less. And when the, when the lower portion is done, the construction parking can go in that. The, the construction parking can go into a, a structure that's not finalized. So it's, it's less.
Okay, great. And then I guess, Lisa, you mentioned in your part that the, and I was at the Planning Commission meeting, that you're planning on, on making the Holly Laurel signal activate, activated?
That was a mitigation measure that came out of the Environmental Impact Report.
I really would, would recommend that we really, really look at that, because I have a feeling that that might, I don't know why it's going to mitigate anything. I think it's going to unmitigate a lot of stuff. But that's just my, that's anecdotal, having driven that area a lot. I have a feeling it's going to back up into the El Camino Real. So you guys are going to monitor that, I'm sure. But, but mitigation, what was the mitigation to, to do that? I don't understand the mitigation of it.
I think it was for the flow of traffic to go through quicker than the stoplight, at a, at a stop sign situation.
Sideways? Sideways or, or east and west? North and south? Or both?
For call.
Okay. Because I have a feeling-
East and west?
I have a feeling east and west is going to, but again, you'll look at it, you'll find out. So, okay.
Bob, which intersection are you referring to?
Holly Laurel.
Where there's just a red flashing light?
That's going to be fully signalized, you're saying?
That's the mitigation measure in the EAR.
And I think it's going to back up on the El Camino Real. Well, again, I hope I'm wrong. You know, you guys will look at it, so you'll figure that out. I know it will. But I only, I only do some directional things, like, you know, under bridge, under ways and stuff like that. I just, I also want to add my comment that I was here, Mr. Grogard, who unfortunately isn't here, and I were, were involved at the beginning of this thing. We were on council, and, and it has been a long ride. But it's always been a good project. John, you stuck with it the whole time, and I think you've done a great job with your staff. And obviously, our staff is stuck with it, too. So we, everybody's done a great job in sticking with it. And it's going to be an interesting thing. As, as Mr. Johnson said, if we're doing the Transit Village at the same time, it's going to be real interesting. But hopefully, we've got, we've got plans in place. So, I mean, we know what we have to do. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Bob. I just have a few questions. First of all, thanks to staff for incredible work on this, and to John and Jessica. Nice, nice work. I know it's just been incredibly long project. Certainly predates my time on the council. I don't know who wants to answer these, but maybe Jessica, to start with. In all the drawings I saw, and thank you, by the way, for supplying this very detailed booklet of the plans. I didn't see any view from the east side of Laurel Street. And I've had a couple of people ask me, if you stand on the east side of Laurel Street, say by, across the street from where Foodville is today, what will you see behind the Laurel Street buildings? And maybe I, maybe ten, I didn't see it, but-
That's what you're going to see.
Well, that's-
There's no obstruction there.
We wanted to make sure we weren't building a building that was going to loom over Laurel in any way. So we have cross-sections, say through Wells Fargo. And I'm 6'2". So we, we took somebody on the eastern side, on the sidewalk, if they were to look back towards the west. Wells Fargo, for instance, that line of sight, you don't see the building. So where there are buildings currently, you're not going to see the building. But there are a couple of openings, just like Laurel, and next to Wells Fargo, where you'll have a view like that.
Right. And I know, I'm not, I was assuming you're going to see the project from the openings. My, my question was, what are you going to see looking, if you're standing, you know, on the opposite side where there's not an opening? What, what are you going to see behind it? Are you going to see one floor, two floors? A roof?
No, you won't see anything.
Okay, even from the east side?
Correct.
You said this is going to start a year from now.
It will take us about six months to submit for a building permit, get our building permits. We're now in June. So the first thing that we have to do is, is demolition, and then we start excavation. And typically, that's kind of weather-driven.
Forgive me if I missed it in here, but, you know, we always get asked, is there a number of people can call if they want to complain about something? Will there be some, a number posted somewhere where people can contact the project manager? Or will they-
Yeah, that was one of the conditions of the Planning Commission. They wanted a sign on, for just that reason, on all four sides.
So they're going to call you and not Lisa or Al, right? They're going to call you?
No, no, no. We'll have a person that they can call onsite.
All right. Just, this is just really a curiosity question. Have you had any preliminary interest from potential retail vendors that are interested in the, those sites?
Yes, we have. So, I mean, it's a great location. You know, San Carlos is, is, it's not as dynamic as Laurel, but it's a great street, a lot of traffic. So we think we're going to have a restaurant at the corner there. And we-
How novel, a restaurant.
Well, there's really great demand, and, and the spaces in between, we are very confident will be filled up right away. We're, we're kind of far away from being able to, to deliver, so we, we haven't actively, you know, done anything more than just solicit preliminary interest.
All right. Thanks, John. Al, the, the only other question I have is, when we were talking about the Holly 101 improvements, didn't we talk about fully signalizing the Holly and Laurel sign?
And I said, I don't think it's a good idea.
Holly at Laurel. It could have been, that, that there was discussion at that time.
I remember Bob saying at the time.
Yeah. And, and the reason, again, I think as, as Lisa alluded to, is, is it's actually inefficient the way it's designed now, because there's no rhyme or reason to it. You pull up, and you look around, and you see people crossing and walking and driving. So that's the idea, is that it's more inefficient.
I'll be here for you.
Thank you.
I won't say I told you something.
I assume that it'll be coordinated with the El Camino.
Yeah, I'm sure it will. Our Public Works Director is not in.
Any other questions of staff before we open it up? This is a public hearing. So I don't have any speaker cards. Is there anyone from the public? I see Chris Wuthman over there. Come on up, Chris.
I felt like I just bid for something.
Well, you won.
Good evening, councilors. Thank you. My name's Chris Wuthman. I'm a San Carlos resident, and I also do work in real estate development. I am here this evening to support and, and complement this project, this application and the work that's been done on it. I did come and attend the Planning Commission, and I commented there that I think it's a handsome design. The, the new architect, architecture firm is an outstanding firm, and they've done a great job building on the terrific work started by the original architect. I also commented, made a couple of suggestions for possible improvements in the garage for pedestrian safety and accessibility. And I appreciate that they were taken into consideration in the project for the benefit of the citizens of San Carlos. I have one other comment this evening. It's of a different nature. It's more technical, civil, legal-type comment with respect to the tentative map, which is part of your approval and in your packet. And this is something that actually could be taken up, I think, at the final map filing. But if, if I'm correct on this, and I could be wrong, it could be important for, for consideration during the interim period, planning during the interim period. The tentative map appears currently to make the cities, to set up the city's parking garage as a condominium. Now, this is different from what Lisa said in her remarks. She referred to it as a parcel. And the comment I wanted to make is, alternatively, it can be set up as a parcel as opposed to a condominium. It appears the tentative map sets it up as a condominium. The city may not want it to be a condominium and part of an association. It may be more advantageous for, for the city and for the developer for it to be a separate airspace parcel. So I don't know what conversation there's been between the developer and the staff on this point, but I, I thought it's an important enough consideration for the long-term, for city's long-term interest in that garage, how this is technically and legally set up. So I just wanted to say this for, this period until it becomes codified in, in a final map. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Great. Thanks, Chris. Okay.
Mr. Chair, could I, Lisa, could you respond to that, please?
It is established as a condo parcel for the city, and then the city would be a participant-
See, we got both words in there.
Condo lot.
Okay. Okay, condo, go ahead. I mean, I'm just trying to understand his point and what's the counterpoint.
Right, so it is a condo.
Okay.
And the city would be the owner and participate as well in the Property Owners Association.
Okay.
And I would need to, to check in with our legal counsel as to the advantages or disadvantages of the two options.
So you're going to follow up and we'll, we'll make sure we get the right words.
It was established in the disposition and development agreement, though that it would be the condo, and that the city would participate as such. But we can look into those options.
Okay. Well, thank you. Okay, thanks, Chris. Go ahead, John.
We actually, we, we did talk about that quite a bit. And in the past, what we have done is we've had, if, there's one master association, and because the garage is actually in the building, just like a condominium unit, it's its own space. So there will be an association for the retail, association for the homeowners, the garage, they will all be part of a master association, because there are common things for, with that building. So you have to have an association for, you know, painting the building or any other maintenance.
Well, I'll leave that up to more technical minds than me. I just wanted to make sure we're, we're working on it. Thank you. Great, thanks, John. Thanks, Chris.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? All right, I think just because this is a public hearing, we need a motion to close it.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to close the public hearing. I second.
All right. Crystal, do we need a roll call for that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes. Okay. I think we're ready for a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 2015 dash-
57.
57. A resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, adopting the mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the Wheeler Plaza redevelopment project. And I move to introduce ordinance number-
1490.
1490. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, approving the Wheeler Plaza Plan Development Plan and related zoning map amendment to rezone the project site from mixed-use downtown core, or MU-dC zoning district to planned development, PD zoning district at Wheeler Plaza. APN number 050-132-260. 1425 San Carlos Avenue.
Five.
Excuse me?
1245.
1245 San Carlos Avenue, thank you. APN number 050132180. 1249 to 1265 San Carlos Avenue, APN number 050132170. And 657 Walnut Street, APN number 050132-140.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, I'd request that, that you take two separate votes, so we get two separate roll calls, one for the reso and one for the introduction of the ordinance.
Okay. So, Crystal, a roll call on the resolution.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes. And the ordinance?
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes. Okay. Thank you all. All right, moving on to item 10C, consideration of fiscal year 2014, 2016 mid-cycle budget adjustments, and adopting a resolution authorizing the adjustment of fiscal year 2014, 2016 general fund and non-general fund budgets. Do I need to read the "I" part below it before you begin, Rebecca?
No.
I don't? Okay. Thank you. It's all yours.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Rebecca Mendenhall, Administrative Services Director. Before you tonight, for consideration, is the fiscal year 2014-16 mid-cycle budget update. This is the second year of a two-year budget cycle, and as part of the mid-cycle review, staff has conducted a thorough analysis of year-to-date revenues and expenses and projections for the coming year. In addition to the fiscal review, departments are given an opportunity to review their budgets and request additional funding if needed. Tonight, there are recommended changes to the general fund, the wastewater fund, and the capital funds. Before we get to the next fiscal year, there are some transfers that have been recommended for approval this fiscal year. The general fund loaned money to NPDES and the sewer fund in the combined amount of $710,000. These loans have been outstanding for almost 10 years. As both the sewer and the NPDES funds are projected to have positive balances at the end of this year, it is recommended that we settle these loans. With council approval, the sewer fund would transfer $100,000 directly to the general fund to pay off its debt. And for NPDES, rather than pay the general fund, it's recommended that NPDES transfer the payoff amount directly into the general capital fund to fund the annual storm drainage improvements. In addition to settling the loans, staff has recommended additional transfers from the general fund into equipment and technology replacement funds to replenish the depleted balances following the purchase of a new fire truck and the new technologies throughout the city. So moving on to the next fiscal year, the changes recommended for the general fund can be broken into three categories. There's one-time additions, there's operating expenditure increases for known changes in expenses, and program enhancements. We have two recommended one-time funding requests, professional services funding in the amount of $120,000 to fund a study of infill development opportunity sites in El Camino and the Laurel Street corridor. This is a strategic plan objective. And secondly, funding for development plan check services to support the anticipated increase in large-scale commercial and multi-residential projects. This expense will be fully recovered through fees collected. The next category of changes is for known operating expenditure increases. Included in this category are unexpected increases in our pension costs due to the CalPERS assumption changes, known contract increases in public safety services, including fire, and additional costs related to annual software subscriptions, license renewals, and funding for facility maintenance costs. Included in the maintenance cost is funding for trash pickup around the train station. Following a detailed review of the budget and operations, staff has recommended the following program enhancements. Additional detail for each of these can be found in Attachment Five in your packet. These requests include funding for the Holly Street Backyard Collection Service to remove garbage bins away from the street to avoid potential risk to drivers and pedestrians, continued funding for two school crossing guards, funding for IT consulting to support the strategic plan 10-year target to make most government services available online, funding for additional recreation programs and activities, which will be fully recovered through fees paid by participants, funding for anticipated increases in legal fees. For example, this year, we've spent almost $40,000 from this budget for public information requests, funding for community development professional services to assist with special projects, funding for the implementation of a countywide fire station alert system. In addition to the professional services funding requests, there are several staffing changes that have been recommended. The first is the reorganization of the Public Works Department. This is due to the new initiatives and requirements by the Regional Water Board, and there's no cost to do this, as we would eliminate two public works superintendent positions and replace them with a public work supervisor, a new civil engineering technician, and a new senior maintenance worker. The second position is to restore an account technician in the Finance Division. Several years ago, we eliminated this position, and since that time, the functions of business registration, payroll, accounts receivable, and payables have been handled by two full-time staff. With the increase in payroll reporting requirements for the Affordable Care Act and increases in the volume of transactions, we've had quite a backlog of delinquent business registration renewals. Restoring this position will increase customer service levels and enforcement of delinquent accounts, which will generally, which will potentially increase our registration revenues. Due to an increased number of projects and programs, such as potential bond measure, residential parking permit program, and the shuttle program, it's recommended that we add a senior management analyst position to the City Managers Department. All of these special projects are currently being handled by external consultants, but for consistency, they would be better handled internally. Also, in the City Managers Department, it was mentioned earlier tonight, it's recommended that we add a new part-time sustainability coordinator. This position would be responsible for implementing the climate action plan measures. And finally, it's recommended that we add a new systems analyst. With the increased demand for technology, IT staff's workload continues to increase, primarily in the areas of project management and application support. As the city continues to move toward more online programs, there's an increased need to support these, as well as our existing infrastructure. And the general fund recommendations for transfers is similar to the current fiscal year. We're requesting transfers to help replenish the depleted fund balances after the purchases of the new fire truck and the technologies. If all of the general fund recommendations are approved, we're projecting a small surplus of approximately $140,000. In the wastewater or sewer fund, there's only a few changes. As with the general fund, increases for pension and medical have been incorporated. Software enhancement and server replacement are requested totaling thirty-five, or thirty-six thousand five hundred. And related to capital project spending, staff recommends accelerating the funding for the sewer capacity improvement project to meet consent decree deadlines by moving the budget that was originally projected in future years to the current year. In the capital fund twenty-five, there are several recommendations. Detail on these can also be found in Attachment Seven, but I'll go through a quick summary of the changes. We have additional funding recommended for previously approved projects for the Holly Street One-on-One Interchange, the San Carlos Streetscape Project, and facilities energy And we also have an addition of several new projects, City Hall signage on the first floor and throughout City Hall, a community garden at Eaton Park to replace the former BMX bike area, enhancements to the IT infrastructure at the courtyard to support being the backup EOC location, and funding for an EIR for synthetic fields at Burton and Stadium Field, funding for an evaluation of the city's field and agronomic conditions, removal of a fire tower that's structurally unsafe next to Station Thirteen, funding for traffic improvements at the Four Corners intersections, and funding for a master plan for North Cresview Park. If all of the recommendations are approved tonight, the resulting expenditure budget can be summarized as shown here. One item to note is the general fund expenditures shown in fiscal year 2015-16 reflect a $9 million payoff of the landmark lease financing agreement. We anticipate that to be paid off this fall. Taking a closer look at the general fund, fiscal year 2016 revenues reflect increases of 5% over the 2015 projections. These include property and sales tax increases, increases in charges for services and licenses and permits for the large-scale development projects, and increases in transient occupancy taxes. Overall salaries and benefits budget for fiscal year 2016 is 11% higher than 2015 budget, primarily due to the increases in CalPERS retirement rates, medical increases, and the proposed new positions discussed previously. Operating expenditures are budgeted to increase 5.5% over fiscal year 2015 projections due to increases related to the fire contract, operating expenses related to facilities maintenance, and all of the proposed program enhancements. The total recommended general fund budget summary is shown here. As noted before, if all recommendations are approved, the net change will be about $140,000 In summary, the proposed budgets before you tonight result in the following fund balances for fiscal year 2016. Under Gatsby fifty-four presentation for fund balances, these balances are split into several categories. Unassigned balances are immediately available for use. Assigned balances include amounts set aside to be used for specific purposes. In the general fund, these are, these include a $3 million reserve for capital and $3.2 million reserve for unfunded liabilities. Committed balances are those that have been committed by council via resolution. And non-spendable or restricted balances are restricted by external parties or contracts. These include prepaid balances in grants that are subject to certain restrictions. So looking ahead, there are still threats to our budget, uncertainties related to how CalPERS calculates our rates going forward, costs associated with the implementation of the Affordable Health Care Act and stormwater regulations and permitting, uncertainties related to public safety contract increases, energy and health care cost increases, and the historic drought and its negative fiscal impact. So with that, I'm happy to answer. Any questions?
Okay. Cameron?
Thanks, Rebecca. So I have a number of questions. The first one, so basically to summarize, economic times are good, revenue is exceeding expectations, we have more money, and so we're making this adjustment by enhancing some programs and doing some additional capital projects. Is that, is that a good summary?
Yes. And we've also done a projection for future years.
Great. So that's great news. That's a question for you, also maybe a question for Jeff. You know, we've talked about in the past that when times were leaner, we outsourced a number of services, outsourced public safety, and drawed down the overall city headcount. And I've heard, you know, Jeff talk about sort of the philosophy of what happens when times are good. And so what I've heard you say, Jeff, is that, you know, the philosophy is to, rather than to create new positions or new kind of ongoing expenses for the city, to rather defund capital. Because it's sort of a fungible thing. You can put money into capital when times are good, you can draw it down when times are leaner. My sort of trying to look at kind of the high-level ratio here is it looks like we're doing about $2 million of additional capital and $2 million of additional program expenses. And that's not, not what I would have expected. I would have expected it to be a bit more capital-intensive and a bit less on the creating new position side. So I just wanted to kind of give you a comment at a high level. How do you think about that?
Sure. Well, I don't think the position creation would be anywhere near $2 million. I think it would be far less. So I do think, in terms of capital funding, that we would continue to outpace sort of the operational budget growth. But if you, if you look back over the last several years, which have been good years too, where we've seen growth in the city and not budget cuts, but a growing budget, virtually all that growth has gone into capital, with actually some years, the operating budget's still shrinking. And the operating budget has returned significant savings every year that the council has then retroactively applied to capital, so that the capital growth in the city, in my 15 years in this city, the amount of money that we're spending on capital investment is far greater than, than any period in the last 20 years, aside from specific bond projects like the library or grade sec, if you factor those out, just the routine maintenance is, has been very high. And this budget, even the operating budget, there's significant investment in the operating budget for Lou back there to take care of our facilities so that we, you know, so that they last longer and we don't have to replace them as soon. So that's where a lot of the investment in the operating budget is going as well.
Can I, I'd like to ask a couple of questions about the, two of the positions that are being created. So one is, I think you called management analyst, and my understanding is this is sort of a, a full-time person who would do some of the duties that Elaine and her team are doing today, because what was perceived to be short-term project, contract work, is now looking like, you know, we can fill the role with a long-term person. Do you see that as a replacement for the contract work, or do you see it to augment it? And how do you see that sort of fitting into the sort of special projects as you've created over the last year?
Yeah, I think, I think we probably wouldn't seek to fill that position on July 1st, and we would be looking to fill it towards the end of the contracts, the special, the special contract analyst and the special contract director that we have now, so that they, you know, there really would be little or no overlap in the two.
And when do those contracts end?
I believe we were anticipating those would go until November, about the time of the election, and potentially earlier, depending on some decisions that the council will make between now and then.
Okay. And then on the IT position, my concern about the way it's been described is that, you know, we talk about, well, there's eighty-some-odd projects and we have these goals. I'm just, I'm worried that, you know, IT is a place you can dump endless amounts of money without seeing a lot of tangible results. So I'm wondering, it would make me feel better if there was some specific things that, you know, staff wanted to accomplish with that position. Can you give me any more color on specific initiatives of what that person would be doing? Because the eighty projects, to me, just felt a bit vague.
Well, we have a number of initiatives going right now. We have hired a network consultant to review our infrastructure. So depending on the results of that, there'll be a lot of changes that need to be, there may be changes that need to be made to that. We have, just like with, with the capital projects, we haven't spent a lot of time keeping up to date, like our backup servers are, are coming to the end of their life. And so there's routine maintenance that needs to be done, that needs to be ongoing, and we just haven't had the bandwidth to do that, as well as continue to implement all the new programs, the application support that requires...
Okay. And speaking from a high-management level, I can tell you that, you know, for at least the last four years, the number-one internal complaint we have from departments and city staff is that there's not enough IT support for the systems that we're asking the various departments to use. And, you know, we've certainly added quite a bit of technology and new systems to the city in the last five years, six years, and we have, you know, today, and in fact, even with this new position, less IT than we had in 2005.
I see. So do you see this position as mostly servicing staff and internal resources rather than initiatives that the public will interface with? So we've talked about, you know, moving more city services online, you know, being able to sign up for, you know, parks and rec services through the, through the internet, et cetera. It sounds more like this person is going to be handling IT requests from, from staff. Is that, is that accurate?
They'd be working on application support, so whether that comes from internal or external. So when somebody has an issue with something on a website, they'll, I mean, even the residents will call in and say, hey, we have a problem here. It's, you know, the website is one thing, one of the projects that we want to look at, and so this would be, the person would be application support for that. Every, every new online feature we bring brings with it, you know, possible problems and support issues that come up. Just this room and getting the council meeting, or getting prepared for council takes a lot of time.
Okay. I, I think that's, that's fine. I mean, I have no doubt that it's needed. I would say, you know, there's an issue in that, you know, a lot of the smaller IT decisions in terms of like, well, let's create a mobile app, or let's launch Shave Shen Carlos, or let's do these various initiatives, are not things that are sort of directed at the policy level from the council perspective, but then they create the demand for staff resources down the road. So, I mean, I, I, you know, am passionate about this issue in particular, and I want to make sure that we're focusing the resources in such a way that they have an impact on the public. And I'm not sure that I feel a lot closer to that than, than I did when we started, so I hope it's something that we can talk about, and hopefully we find somebody good who can work on some good projects. I wanted to switch topics and talk about synthetic fields. So are we, are we being asked to authorize an ERR of whether or not we should put synthetic turf at Burton Park?
Two locations, Burton Park and Stadium Field at Highlands.
And what's the basis for that? You know, has there been discussion, there certainly hasn't been a discussion since I've been here about, do we want to move forward with putting synthetic turf at Burton Park? And it's something that I would want to think about and get some community input before making that decision. So if I vote tonight for the budget as it's written, am I authorizing staff to go forward with a quarter-million-dollar study of whether or not we want to put synthetic turf at Burton Park?
You are authorizing staff to begin the process to accomplish exactly what you just said, which would be to get a lot of public input, feedback, and find out what the mitigations and issues would be in doing that before the, so that that information would be available to the council as part of the decision-making process about whether or not to go forward.
And what is the impetus for wanting to do that? Is it, is it a staff-initiated cost-saving measure, or is it a council-initiated policy decision?
Well, it's a combination of several council policy decisions around conversations the council has had about wanting to create additional field space or utilize the space they have in a greater way to accommodate all the various leagues and sports activities and demands in town, combined with the council's desire to conserve water and to improve a number of their green initiatives. And, you know, as we, as we really started to look long and hard at the drought and the data around the drought, and what the thinking is about how long this is going to last and the impact, it's really hard not to take a look at Burton Park now and Stadium Field and at least have the conversation about whether or not it makes sense to put synthetic turf there. I know for most people, their initial reaction is, ooh, no, you know, gra- I know for most people, their initial reaction is, ooh, no, you know, grass is so much better. I feel that way to a certain extent, but I think it's time for us to really hone in on the word better. And what does that mean? Is that, you know, our history and our sensation about how we feel about grass, or really its impact on the environment, the fertilizer, the water, the months that it's closed and not available to the public for use during the year? These are all significant issues that, you know, when, when you look at, when I look at, honestly, I have to say, grass maybe isn't better. Synthetic turf is better in those categories. Now whether or not the council wants to go there, wants to come up with the funding to do that, whether or not that's something the community wants is another story. But I think we have a responsibility to at least have a, a significant dialogue in the community about those two fields.
So I, I totally agree that it's a reasonable thing to talk about. I don't know that it makes sense in the context of a budget appropriation. And I don't know how my colleagues feel about it. I would much rather be, and I, and I also don't know the, the specific protocol, but I would much rather have the discussion in the context of sort of a parks inventory plan, which I think we're going to be talking about at some point. And, you know, I, I'm not sure whether I'm prepared to support a quarter million dollars of studying, putting synthetic turf at Burton Park without having kind of a broader conversation, particularly with some of my other colleagues present. But I, I'd be interested to hear what, what my colleagues think. So I will turn over the mic.
All right, thanks Cameron. Bob?
Let me ask my, hello. Let me ask my question first. It's more of a technical question Rebecca, maybe accounting, maybe too much inside baseball, but you're going to transfer some money, $610,000 from the NPDS to Fund 25?
Yes.
Why wouldn't we transfer the money to the general fund and then the general funds to Fund 25?
We could do that. This was just to simplify that process.
Because I mean, to me, that's a trail of, you pay it back and then you just decide to do it. Because in this, you know, there's, there's some words in here that sort of bothered me about forgiveness or something. And it's really not forgiveness, it's just, it's a, well, at least it doesn't appear to me. It's basically just moving it from one place to another, just like you said, a shortcut.
Yes. I mean, but, but in essence, by paying off the loan, we, well, they're not, we're not forgiving it because we are doing the shortcut. I understand what you're saying.
But that word was used in here and that's what threw me off. It was used in the staff report. And that's what threw me off. So I just want, to me, it looked like you just moved the general, moved the Fund 25 and you're done. But anyway, okay, I understand.
We can do it the other way.
No, it's up to, hey, you're keeping the books. I just, I just want to, I just want to make sure everybody understands that it's, it, all we're doing is just short cutting one step. We can make two generalities or one. One's always good for me, but I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. You know, I don't really have any other questions on, on any of this. Certainly to my colleague's comment about artificial turf. Have I lived that? It, it was almost seemingly as long as it took to get Wheeler Plaza approved. You know, I do share your, you know, I think we need the, we need the space. We need, and certainly that's why we did Highlands. It was a long and arduous process. I don't remember if we, we actually committed funds before we even got to that point. I can't remember. If we did, then I'll, I'll sort of agree with you. If we didn't, then I don't know why we wouldn't do the same process to, you know, go along on, on that way. It's, it's just, it's such a hot-button issue in a lot of places and it still will be. Obviously with the drought, there's a whole other perspective on this. And I think with the success, at least it appears to me, the success of, of Highlands Field. And it again casts another, some other questions on it. But I don't know whether, whether we should commit the money or whether we should have the dialogue and then commit the money.
And you could go about doing it either way? This is my budget recommendation to the council, that you go ahead and budget the money for the EIR work. That doesn't mean that the council's not going to continue to have this policy question. In fact, it's going to be what, what drives it back to you to have these questions so that you could, you know, potentially, you know, say, no, you know what? We have the money in the budget, but we're not going to do it. We're not going to move, we're not going to hire this EIR consultant. We're not going to.
That's where, that's where I think I'm going at. I don't have any trouble budgeting numbers, that's, but, but spending it, and I think that's where we're going here. You know, I don't mind budgeting a billion, gazillion, but I think the discussion, I think really, and, and, you know, having gone through the last one nauseam, it, it's something that this town really gets involved in. And, and I, you know, I could see ideas where Highlands might work, part of Burton might work, maybe all of it, I don't know. I mean, there's a lot of different ways. I just, I sort of don't want to, I sort of agree with my colleague. I want to make sure that we, we can budget. I don't have my budgeting it, but I don't know that we want to spend it until we have a pretty broad discussion about everything. Because the last one, as you remember, you know, it was pretty.
It went on for many years and we spent many, many hundreds of thousands of dollars before the final vote to actually do it.
Exactly. But having said that, go ahead, sorry.
It's my full intention to, to begin the process with a full study session in front of the city council, really just to, to look at this and talk about it at a high level. So I don't know if that increases your comfort level about, you know, budgeting money or not. That's up to you. If you're not comfortable budgeting the money, then we'll simply have to make an additional appropriation and amend the budget down the road.
Yeah, I mean, I can, just to, if, if, you know, I'll make a brief comment, which is to say, from where I sit today, I don't support putting synthetic turf at Burton Park. That being said, I haven't talked to that many people about it and I haven't studied the issue. So my preference is not to budget for a hypothetical thing that I might one day support. My preference is to first be convinced that it's a worthwhile thing to do and then, and then budget for it. And I, and I, so my preference is to, to take it out. But that's where I stand.
Let me just push back a little bit. In order to get the information that it's going to take to convince you that it's a worthwhile thing to do, we are going to need to do the work and do the study. It doesn't mean at the end of the day, you're going to do the project. It just means that you've studied all the impacts associated with doing the project so that you could make a decision about actually doing it or not doing it in an informed context. Otherwise, it's a real short discussion, just from a, you know, sort of a high-level policy decision. Do you like grass or do you like synthetic turf? What does that mean Jeff? Well, it means the kids can play more, it means we have less water, it means we have less fertilizer. We could kind of have that conversation right now. But where you really want to get into detail, that's where we're going to need the money to do the study.
Well, like I said, I don't have any trouble budgeting as long as we have some pretty, some interesting discussions with lots and lots of people and certainly the other two members of the council here to, before we start spending it, that, I don't have any trouble with that. I mean, it's, it's in a budget. A budget is, is a flexible item. It's not rock, rock solid, it's not locked in stone, so anyway.
And just a brief response Jeff. I, I hear what you're saying. I think what the EIR and that process will tell you is, you know, what would be the impact if you, if you did it? How much it would cost? I think there's a question, there's an upstream question, which is about the need. And I think that that can be, determining whether or not there's a need can be done for less than $250,000. So, and I'm not convinced today that, that it's the best use of time money or, or that there's an overwhelming need.
All right, Rebecca, I just have one question I want to, then I'll jump in my response to the budgeting, the EIR. One of the things Jeff and I have had a conversation about over the years, and we've all generally had this conversation, I even mentioned it at the State of the City, was the fact that, you know, we cut a lot of personnel years ago and, you know, we're kind of proud of that, that we kind of run a lean and, you know, lean mean machine. But I think what I'm hearing is that there's a cost to that in terms of the workload on the people who work here. And that some of the, you know, rearranging you've been doing and adding in staff positions and things is an attempt to sort of ease that, that workload on the people that have been doing it for the last few years. I mean, do I read that right?
Yes.
Okay. That, that was what I, what I thought. And, you know, there is always a flip side to every, every move you make. And so I applaud the fact that, you know, in the times like, in the flush times that we have, that we do spend the money wisely and that we are adding back the personnel that we probably didn't want to cut several years ago. So thank you for that. So let me just, kind of just give my thoughts on this whole EIR thing. And thanks Rebecca, you can sit down now. I will be the first to tell you, I hate artificial turf. I had an argument with my wife about it. She wants to rip out the lawn and put in a rug. My neighbor did it. There's people doing it and I just, I sit over my dead body. The lawn is dying. We're letting it die, we're going to replace it with drought-resistant plants. But I, and I realize that we had this conversation, I say we loosely, because I wasn't on the council, you were, Bob, with respect to putting artificial turf in years ago, and it was a long-drawn-out battle. But I, you know, times were different then in the sense that we didn't have a severe drought at that time. We weren't talking in as dire terms about global warming and climate change and the loss of water resources as we are today. I recently saw a chart that was absolutely terrifying, showing our snowpack on a six-year decline, down to virtually zero now. So the reason that I, Cameron, I think, that I would rather leave the money in the budget is a couple of reasons. First of all, I don't think we can ignore it. But secondly, we have, we're in a different, we're in a different dynamic now. It's a situation that, you know, requires that we put, that, that we pay attention to it. Plus, we do have the financial capability at this point to leave it in the budget. We can take it out, we can, we can say we don't want to do the, the EIR. I understand your discomfort with it. But like Bob says, you know, it's still our decision whether or not we want to go through with it. I'd rather leave it in and have the discussion. And, you know, when Mark and Matt are back, we'll, you know, we can, we can argue about it as long as we want. But I really feel that we ought to leave it in for now. If we take it out and then all of a sudden we end up in a recession and then, and the drought gets worse, I don't know how it can get worse, but, you know, we get to the point where people are having 50 and 60% water cutbacks. Then we got people coming to us and saying, you mean to tell me you had the money in your budget and you took it out to do a, a replacement of your, of your turf? I would rather have the discussion when we, when we can budget the money and, and make that decision, rather than have our backs against the wall and then have to find the money. And then what do we cut? I'd rather leave it in or out. We're not going to spend it until we've decided that we want to go through it. But I, I just think it's important that we, we leave it in for now. And that's really all I wanted to say. I hope you understand that.
And Mr. Mayor, if I could just add for, for Cameron. My commitment Cameron to you will be that we won't spend a dime of the money until we come back and we answer those basic questions for you and the full council on, on need. We're updating the Hany study right now on field usage that the council asked for. So we'll have more data in the coming months for you to be able to sort of put some context around this before we launch into an EIR process.
I appreciate that. I mean, you know, it's not only Highlands that we went through with this. We just went through this with Crestview, which is a, you know, cherished neighborhood park. And we had, you know, thousands of people sign a petition and people marched in the hometown days parade and, you know, to prevent a synthetic turf field. I think Burton Park is going to be 10x that. And I think we've, we're working on another big park called Black Mountain. We got a lot of other things to do. Seems to me, I'm not sure why we'd invite controversy at this point, but I don't, you know, I don't want to vote against the budget. But I don't, I don't want to vote to support moving forward with putting synthetic turf at Burton Park, so.
Can I ask a procedural question? If, if it's a two-to-one vote, it's, we have a quorum, but two, two votes is not a majority, right?
That's correct. If it's a two-to-one vote, then the budget wouldn't pass tonight and the budget wouldn't be adopted in time for the new fiscal year. And we would probably have to look at shutting down the government.
If my colleagues will do me the courtesy, if I offer an amendment, which you guys can vote down, but I can vote forward for it, I will vote for the budget. Go ahead.
Well, first you need a motion on the budget.
Okay. I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2015 dash.
58.
58. A resolution of the city council, the city of San Carlos authorizing the adjustment of fiscal year 2014-2016 general fund and non-general fund budgets.
I have a second. And I, I'd like to offer an amendment to strike the funding for the EIR for synthetic turf at Highlands and Burton Park. And I need a second, so we can vote on it.
So let's, let me, let me ask a procedural question, then perhaps the city manager. Assuming that I go along with that and we, we pass the budget except for that item, can that item be brought back? Or can we, I guess, is, is that intrinsic to tonight happening, Mr. City Manager?
No, as I said earlier, this is, you know, this is a discussion that I plan on bringing to the council, whether or not we have ER funding in the budget or not. And we can always add the AR funding down the road. So it will simply make, what is this, Fund 25? It'll simply make Fund 25 $250,000 larger.
In the, in the interest of collegiality, how's that word, huh? I'll, I'll go along with my, with my colleague.
And I can certainly support the budget as now proposed and amended.
I'll go, I'll go along with my colleague and second that motion and, or that amendment. How are we going to do this, Mr. City Attorney? Is it a special amendment?
There's a proposed substitute motion that would then take precedence.
Okay, so I second that substitute motion.
So we're voting on the substitute motion first. All right, any further discussion? Okay. Crystal, we are voting on the amended motion. Okay.
Councilmember Sully?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, do we need to have a discussion, Mr. City Manager, or anything on this, this 10 CI? It's a procedural item? Or maybe somebody has questions, I don't know. Any questions on that? Can I make a motion?
This is just our annual adoption of the GAN limit. We're substantially below the limit, so.
Mr. Mayor, I make a move, a move to adopt Resolution 2015 dash.
59.
59. A resolution of the city council, the city of San Carlos electing the population and price adjustment factors in establishing the 2015-2016 appropriations limit of the city of San Carlos pursuant to California Constitution Article X111B and Section 7900 at, yeah, I took Latin too, of the California Government Code.
I second.
Okay. I'll assume no discussion. Crystal?
Councilmember Sully?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
And Mayor Collins?
Yes. And with that, we're adjourned.